Thank you, Emily. Thank you. Good evening, councillors, officers and our viewers live streaming tonight's meeting. This is our scheduled first actual hybrid meeting. And I also would like to welcome the members of the public who were attending online. My name is councillor Lina Messina, I'm the mayor of Darabben City Council and the chairperson of person of tonight's meeting. It is my pleasure to welcome you to tonight's council meeting. I declare this meeting open at 6:04pm. Darabben City Council acknowledges the Wondry Warang people as the traditional owners and custodians of the land that we are standing on and pays my respects to elders past, present and emerging. Council pays respect to all other Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander communities in Darabben. Council recognises and pays tribute to the diverse culture, resilience and heritage of Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people. We acknowledge the leadership of Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander communities and their right to self-determination in the spirit of mutual understanding and respect. I would also acknowledge that today, we meet on the joyous celebration day of Diwala, the festival of lights, a day that Hindus, Jains and Sikhs celebrate with their families and friends. A festival marked by four days of celebration, Diwala and Diwali is the brightest and the most significant festival in Indian culture. The festival which coincides with the Hindu New Year celebrates new beginnings and signifies light over darkness, good over evil or knowledge over ignorance. Diwali celebrates the simple joys of life and the ideals include righteousness, introspective, tolerance and respect and transcends borders and cultures across the world. Sikhs celebrate this day as Bandi Chor Divas in memory of the day Guru Hargom Saban was released from prison. I didn't think I was supposed to read that out. With fifty-two Hindu kings and princesses holding on to ropes attached to this rope. On behalf of Darabben City Council, I wish all the Hindu, Jain and Sikh community members a happy Diwala and a happy Bandarachauras Divas Day. On another matter, I'd like to acknowledge that we have two, not one, but two Darabben City Council additions to our family. The first, I'd like to welcome Bryn Allen Newton Hanlon and we congratulate councillor Newton and councillor, and sorry, and just upgraded him, haven't I? And her partner Liam Hanlon to the birth, congratulations on behalf of Darabben City Council. And the other member is our new CEO, Peter Smith, welcome to your first council meeting. Membership, before we commence, I'd like to introduce the councillors and senior staff who are with us this evening. We have the deputy mayor councillor Trent McCarthy, councillor Emily Demetriades, councillor Gaetano Greco, councillor Tom Hannan, councillor Tim Lawrence, councillor Susan Rennie and councillor Julie Williams. And our officers obviously in attendance tonight are Peter Smith, the CEO, Jodie Watson, the general manager of governance and engagement, Sam Hewitt, the general manager of operations and capital, Shadi Hanin, the actual general manager of communities, Rachel Olivia, general manager of city sustainability and strategy, Jacinta Stevens, manager of corporate governance and may also extend a warm welcome to Mr John Watson, our municipal monitor. Thank you, and let's get underway. I'd like to note item number three is apologies, councillor Newton is on parental leave. Item number four, are there any disclosures of conflicts of interest to declare officers and councillors?
Ma'am Messina, I believe I may have a conflict of interest. I've just noticed that there's going to be a tabling of a petition in relation to Baldowood Parade. I attended a community activity, but I attended in under, under the beret of a, of a candidate for the, for the next council election. So I might excuse myself just to avoid any confusion in terms of what my roles are.
Thank you. Noted, at the time of the tabling, we'll ask you to leave and then enter, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, through you. I'd note that agenda item nine point nine contains confidential minutes in relation to the CEO employment matters committee. Should those minutes, the content of those minutes be discussed, obviously, I imagine that would be in camera. I will absent myself given my direct interest and also ask other staff to leave other than general manager Jodie Watson.
Thank you. Are there any further conflict of interest to declare? Thank you. Item number five, confirmation of minutes of previous meeting councillors. Can I please have a motion for the adoption of minutes of the ordinary council meeting held on the twenty-sixth of September, 2022? Moved by councillor Lawrence, seconded by councillor Rennie, all those in favour? Thank you councillors, that's carried unanimously. Item number six. Council's occupational health and safety responsibilities. The health and safety wellbeing of the community has and will always be a paramount consideration of this council. Council continues to be guided by the government directive and wants to be able to do the right thing for the health of our community councillors and council staff. The chamber, virtually or in person, is both a workplace and a public space and we have an obligation to ensure that the working environment and public forums are safe for everyone, both emotionally as well as physically. Item number seven is public question time. Members of the public were invited to submit questions before twelve pm noon today and a response has been prepared where possible for these questions. I ask that you read only the question if they've got somebody in the chamber when I read them out, when I come to your question. No background statements or introductions are permitted pursuant to the government's council governance rules. The minutes of this meeting will record, record the question in full and subject to it complying with governance rules. Light questions will be grouped together and I'll ask the person with whom the first light question was received to come forward and read their question. A single response will be given for light questions. In the event the person who submitted the first light question is not in attendance, I will read out the light questions, name the person who submitted the light questions and provide a response. Please note the public question time will not exceed thirty minutes in duration unless extended by resolution of council through a procedural motion, in which case it may only be extended for another one period of up to thirty minutes. The first question I would like to check is Elizabeth Lamb, Preston in the gallery this evening. And welcome to the members of the gallery, good to see you. I'll read out the question. At the ordinary council meeting at the twenty, on the twenty-sixth of September, 2022, I asked the question, under what specific legislation does council derive the authority to issue fines of privately owned property? Your response was that the Road Safety Act of nineteen eighty-six, section ninety D agreement provides the authority to issue fines on privately owned property. Can you provide, can you prove that the Road Safety Act of nineteen eighty-six has been lawfully enacted by producing a certificate copy of the original certificate? If you're unable to provide this certificate, the Road Safety Act nineteen eighty-six cannot be enforced and that any money collected from the fines issued should be refunded. Thanks again for your question, Elizabeth. We don't, we do not have a proclamation certificate or nor are we aware we're required to have one. All infringements are issued in accordance with the relevant act depending on the nature of the fine. We have no concerns about the lawful basis of our work. If you would like to more information, please contact, more information department manager Yash Dougal is happy to talk to you about it. You can contact him via our customer service number during working hours. Perhaps we can ask also the officer to reach out to the, to Elizabeth Lamb rather than doing it the other way around. Council provides information about the review and appeal options in relation to the fines. The appropriate forum for challenging the interpretation of legislation relating to a fine is open, is an open court. You may wish to consider seeking your own legal advice about the options available to you. Is Ruth here tonight? Welcome.
Good evening, ma'am Messina, it's good to see you again.
You too.
Is it okay if I answer my first two questions together in a batch and then we move to the third? Because the, the third one deals with a different topic.
I've only, I've actually only got two questions, so you have an extra supplementary question?
I've, I did a double-barrelled one in my first one.
Okay, perhaps you can read them all at once.
Okay.
Thank you.
So now that the final report for your street, your say group A has been released, can council please confirm how much is budgeted for this miscellaneous collection of infrastructure projects? And what cost benefit analysis measures have been used to assess the success of each of those projects? Those are my first two questions. My third question, council's draft financial report and performance statement shows that staff turnover has doubled from ten percent to twenty percent in the last two years. What impact has this had on the budget?
Thanks for your questions, Ruth. Provision of two point four million dollars for these works is in council's ten-year capital works plan for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four year. This will be confirmed in the first half of next year when council's twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, twenty-four annual budget is considered after community consultation. We are not planning specific cost benefit analysis of these projects, but what, what we do do is regularly collect and review road usage data and safety data. Most of council's recruitment activities are managed internally, which has minimised adverse budget impact. The, the employment market throughout Australia is experiencing high staff turnover and, and Darabben is currently in the process of bargaining an enterprise agreement and working through identifying what, what retention tools are important to staff.
Thank you very much and good luck with your bargaining.
Thank you. It's Tim Holdsworth in the gallery this evening. Tim's question is, council is investigating changes to the resident parking permit policy. Has council written to current permit holders given they will be most directly, given that they'll be the most directly impacted by changes to the permits they hold? Thank you again, Tim, for your question. Council is letting all householders know via Darabben Community News, which is delivered to all letterboxes. We are advising of the consultation through a wide variety of channels designed to reach our diverse community, including permit holders and non-permit holders. Is Serena in the gallery this evening? No. Thanks Serena, I refer to the block of units at one McCartney Street, McCartney Street and Reservoir. Several of the units were completed many years ago and one of these units is not finished and is just a tall street steel frame and some graffiti covered lower walls. This unfurnished building is an eyesore in the middle of Reservoir. It is directly opposite our new train station and close to the Cheddar Road East Linear Reserve. How long has the building been in this state? Has the building permit expired and will it be either be completed or demolished? I'm glad she's asked that question. Thank you Christina, Serena once again. A planning permit was issued for these development works but has expired. Our records suggest construction has, has in progress been since two thousand and fourteen. This matter has been referred to council's planning compliance team for investigation and given the length of time that this has been ongoing, it will be a priority, it will be prioritised. A building permit was issued by a private building surveyor but has now expired. It is also a matter for the private building surveyor to pursue. Council officers cannot enforce this, however, we have, we have notified the building, private building surveyor. It is not possible to say how long it may take to resolve, but is likely to be a lengthy process. Good evening, the next question is from Bill Jennings of Preston. Good to see you again, Bill.
Thank you, ma'am Messina. Good to see you too. Could, two questions, ma'am. Could council please inform the community who drew the design for the reconfiguration of the nine holes of the Northgate Public Golf Course? And please detail in your answer the name of the person, people or company and the qualifications of those person, people, company, specifically stating if the design was done by a qualified golf course architect. And my second question, during the period of discussion about the Northgate Public Golf Course, representatives of one group interested in the topic visited classrooms in at least five local government primary schools and ran an activity that was the source of the children's drawings that was subsequently submitted as part of the consultation and as an attempted petition that was disallowed. Members of the community learnt that this activity was done without parental consent in at least one instance without the knowledge of the principal. In light of this activity occurring and the media attention the matter received, is council doing anything to review its policies with respect to what are appropriate activities to run in local government schools and its criteria for accepting or not accepting documents like the drawings in the future?
Thank you. As reported at the July twenty twenty-two council meeting, when responding to a similar question, council's community engagement practices encourage, encourage consulting young people were appropriate. These practices include receiving guardian consent when seeking feedback from minors. All Darabben council, all Darabben schools were emailed an invitation to share council survey with their families and community and provide a direct response via the survey. However, council did not run the activity referred to in the question. Other officers understand the activity sheet was created and distributed by a group of parents. Just one moment, please, can I just, yep. The original concept maps outlining the proposed golf course reconfiguration were a creation of a number of council staff from the parks and open space team.
Mayor, the question about the drawings is the council's policy on those drawings potentially being submitted in the future? And what policy would the council have if they were presented? Again, I understand the answer that was made, yep.
I might take that over to the CEO and over to governance, perhaps, oh, Sam, yep.
Through you, mayor, if it pleases the council, I'll give Mr Jennings a call tomorrow and we can perhaps discuss, discuss the particulars of his question and we might be able to find a resolution.
Thank you. Thank you. We have one other question from my understanding. Thank you, councillors and members of the gallery, we've received three questions. Two have been formally rejected and we have another question that's been, we're waiting, I'm waiting a response on. So we're going to adjourn the meeting for until say six thirty. So can I have the live streaming stop, please? Thank you. That is the balance of the questions. Item number eight are petitions, councillors, we have one petition this evening. Just, just, just a minute. Sorry, the, the question time has now since ceased, Mr Nugent, and your three questions will be, will be answered by the CEO directly. And you have been advised of that, thank you, Mr Nugent. Councillor Greco, we're going to be moving into number eight petitions.
And I'd like to declare a conflict of interest in relation to the November twenty sixth state election. Conflict of roles as a candidate for the elections and also as a sitting council member.
Thank you, Miss, thank you, Councillor Greco. Councillor Williams.
Thank you. I would like to table a petition for the CEO's consideration through you, Mayor.
Yes.
I have a petition for thirty two residents that have signed the petition, which has been forwarded to me by Claire Leyden. The petition is regarding the Baldwood Parade and Boardwood intersection, sorry, Broadway intersection around, around about in Reservoir. Residents are demanding change at the dangerous intersection located close to the state primary school and the senior citizens centre and the community facilities. The petition states we are calling on Darabhan Council to collaborate with state government to finally fix this situation. Our key demands are, one, an audit and assessment of the roundabout. Two, a solution for the safety and usability issues of the intersection. Three, consultation with the community on this. And four, a clear implementation plan in which the community are kept informed.
Thank you. Do I have a second for this motion? Seconded by Councillor Lawrence. So thank you, all those in favour. It's been tabled, thank you. Under the governance rules, the originator of the petition may make a two-minute submission to council. I believe we have Claire Leyden on Zoom to speak to the petition.
Hello, yep.
Hello and welcome, thank you for your text, good to see you. This is the first time, you're the very first one doing it this way, so this is the first time. So can I ask for the stopping of the clock, please? I haven't asked, yeah. Just one moment, Claire. But, okay, you have two minutes, thank you, Claire.
Okay, thank you. I'm speaking on behalf of a group of residents because in our area we feel unsafe moving around a key area of East Reservoir. This roundabout is a central point between many key services, including the Reservoir Neighbourhood House and Leisure Centre, the East Reservoir Primary School and the nearby high school, the early childhood services and the senior citizens centre, as well as shops and open spaces. Members of our community have been advocating for action on this dangerous intersection since at least two thousand and seventeen. We've shared many stories of near misses and experiences of families who, due to real safety fears, have abandoned active modes of transport getting to the local school. Last week, we were pleased to have a good turnout at a meeting at the roundabout with council, several councillors, state election candidates and media to experience and discuss the dangers of the roundabout in person. And since then, we've received a number of interested media coverage in a range of media forums. In reference to the four key demands of the petition, we are calling for council to proactively advocate for our community with state government and the Transport Department. Please take the burden off our shoulders for advocating for this basic safety right. Community are exhausted from continually raising our voices. Noting that the intersection requires a complete overhaul and not Band-Aid fixes. The, please take this as a priority issue and I and fellow residents will be waiting with interest to receive your response. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Claire, it was good to see you the other day, thank you. Councillors, we have a very full agenda this evening and I'm committed to ensuring we deal with all business listed within the time limits we have to this end. Whilst I'll be permitting questions of officers prior to the governance of the debate on each item, I'll be exercising my right under the governance rules to limit questions and direct the debate to commence when, when I determine sufficient questioning has occurred. I remind councillors that every item on our agenda has been the subjective of comprehensive council briefings and you've been given ample, ample opportunity to be informed about the issues under consideration. Councillors, the first report we have to consider this evening is item number nine point one, Draft Twenty Twenty One, Twenty Twenty Two Financial Report and Performance Statement. Are there any questions to the officers regarding this item? There are none? Do I have a motion, councillors? Councillor Hannan.
Thank you, Mayor, I'd like to move the officer's recommended motion.
With the insertions of?
Oh, myself. Just reading up there to have Mayor Lina Messina and Councillor Tom Hannan. I'm proposing that because we're both on the Audit Risk Committee.
That's item for item number four and the insertion of your name for item number six, is that correct? On undut the full item nine, nine point one?
Thank you, yes.
Thank you, do I have a second? Seconded by Councillor Rennie. Councillor Hannan, would you like to speak to it?
Ah, yes, thank you, Mayor. So this report, the performance statement we're considering tonight, is for the year ending thirtieth of June twenty twenty two. Bottom line is that council achieved an operating surplus of seven point six million, which is two point one million greater than budgeted for. The higher surplus reflects many factors, including the receipt of a number of grants from federal and state level from funding and I'd like to commend the organisation on successfully applying for grants consistent with our strategy. On the downside, one of the largest items was to offset the write-off of building infrastructure, building and infrastructure associated with the redevelopment of NARC, the North Goodwater and Recreation Centre. There's a, some of the highlights include a substantial capital works programme of over sixty million dollars with, including the completion of the Naranjerry Stadium and the redevelopment of NARC and the introduction of hundreds of thousands of new bins and related infrastructure required to food and organic waste service across city. In terms of the cash and investment position, it's a positive balance of fifty eight point seven million, which again is ahead of budget. Partly that's just reflecting the timing of payments. And in terms of performance, of the twenty seven indicators audited by the Victorian Auditor General's Office, twelve were exceeded or improved on in comparison to the results of the previous year. And to be upfront, there were other line items which were down. And if you look at the service performance indicators, mostly they were at or around previous levels. There were a few below previous years and it is, I won't go into details, but there's explanations given for those. Needless to say, the year ending June twenty 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 two was a turbulent year for the whole of community and including for Darabhan Council. Similarly, you can go through the budget line items and there's explanations line by line whether revenue or costs were ahead of budget or behind and why. Lastly, I'd just really like to give a big thank you to the huge effort by staff to put this, all these reports together and help prepare for this meeting.
Ten seconds.
As well as to our auditors and the Audit Risk Committee who reviewed it to make sure that it's all right, thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Hannan. Councillor Rennie, as a second, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, just briefly. This is an excellent report and I commend it particularly to community members who want to get into the finer detail of what council delivers and how. The report's made up in a way of two key components, the first is the financial component and the second is the performance statement. And they should be read together because obviously how and where we spend money has an impact on the way in which the organisation performs. The financials are made up of different components, including the comprehensive income statement, the balance sheet, the cash flow statement and the statement of capital works. Pages seven and eight of the report are particularly useful for understanding variations to performance and one of the things I think is really noteworthy and the organisation should be congratulated on is the exceptional outcome in terms of grants. So there was a four point seven four million dollar increase in capital grants the organisation was successful in attracting. Writing grant applications takes an enormous amount of work and planning and many staff from across many different departments of the organisation. And so I'd like to thank all of those staff who worked on concept development and design and the financial side of grants and the, the writing itself to get that superb outcome. Worth noting that one of the, the biggest reasons for that increase is the wetlands for Doll Reserve and that is a programme that has been highly sought after for a number of years and it's really very pleasing that that will get off the ground. So I'd like to thank all of the staff in the organisation who had a hand in this report and in fact the work of the organisation that it reflects.
Thank you, Councillor Rennie. Are there any speakers in opposition of the motion? Are there any further speakers? Put the item to the vote, all those in favour? Thank you, councillors, that's carried unanimously. The next report we have to consider this evening is item number nine point two, the annual report twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two. Are there any questions to the officers in relation to this item? There are no questions? Do I have a motion, councillors? Councillors? Councillor Rennie?
Thank you, I'd like to move the recommendation.
Thank you, and it was seconded by councillor, oh, councillor Hannan? Thank you. Would you like to speak to the motion, councillor Rennie?
Thank you. It's always a pleasure to read the annual report because of the superb way in which it outlines what the organisation has achieved over the past year. And this information is delivered in a way that aligns with obviously the four-year council plan and details the progress that's been made. So tonight we're noting this, I'm just looking up at those financial statements. And, you know, this plan, I suppose, sees the period in which council has really started to, to move towards the crisis of COVID into what it means to live with COVID and there have been a number of challenges created by that, particularly early in the financial year, where we had huge challenge, workforce challenges, I think everyone was hit with the great wave of COVID that meant that for months and months, not just our organisation, but many organisations were struck by staff shortages. Notwithstanding that, some of the highlights have been the commencement of the construction of NARC and that project is running superbly, anyone who drives past will just see the progress from day to day. I particularly commend Sam Hewitt and his team for overseeing that project, which is going so smoothly so far. Now and Jerry Stadium open to the public and what a superb facility it is. To go there and see it in use is, is just outstanding and we think, how did we survive without it? When we see all of those kids enjoying such a good facility, it makes you realise what we were missing as a municipality. We have planted about two hundred thousand indigenous plants through council's rewilding programme, that is quite an exceptional outcome. You know, when you think that this council has just a little under a thousand full-time staff, to plant two hundred thousand, you know, if we think about the human power involved in, in that is a credit. And we've also done a lot of work in the planning space, so it's been really pleasing to see progress towards some of the heritage work that's happened. I'd have to say there is not a team in council that hasn't pulled at all stops to deliver some really great initiatives and this plan is a reflection of that and I thank all the staff involved.
Thank you, councillor Rennie. Councillor Hannan, as a, as a second, would you like to speak to the motion?
Just briefly, Mayor, thanks. I've just spoken to the financial side of things, but obviously the reason we do all those financials is to actually deliver programmes and services for our community. I'd like to commend our organisation on putting together another fantastic annual report and I agree with everything that councillor Rennie has said and just to pull out a, a few more highlights of the year, which, you know, there's so many worth mentioning, but some of the bigger numbers are that we've, sorry, provided a thousand residents or carers, also even others with free tailored and independent support and advice about the aged care system and other community supports over the twelve months. The retail activity centre programme saw the design delivery, design and delivery of twenty four centre upgrades. And we've, we've mentioned this at previous meetings, but we're, we're still seeing the benefit of this and will for many years, which is switching to a hundred percent renewable energy for council electricity via our electricity contracts as part of the VCO, the Victorian Energy Collaboration. And council is now in the position of being net zero in terms of emissions and we look forward to next year and beyond really pushing that envelope for the whole of community, not, not just council operations. So there's, there's much more that could go into and I'd encourage people to go through and have a look at the report, it's very well presented. And I, I commend this for approval, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hannan, are there any councillors who wish to speak in opposition to the motion? Are there any further speakers? Before I put that item to the mo, I think that's important to acknowledge the important amount of effort and work that's gone into this particular council plan, ah, sorry, report. This is the, our year in review, it's got details about our city, our people, our council plan, our service performance, our strategic planning, our public transparency, our governance, our community engagement, our financial management. I'd like to read out a few, a few items, it's pretty comprehensive, but I want to read out the awards because I think it's important to note that we've won a few substantial ones, even after this particular report, we won one. So I want to read the few out, first of all is the Australasian Reporting Award for the twenty, for Darabhan twenty nineteen, twenty twenty annual report, the Australasian Management Challenge, the National Climate Award, the LG Pro, Pro Sustainability Initiative Award, the Greenwood Award, the Green Room Award Best Performer, Best Variety Show, Best Lighting, the Greenwood, Green Room Award for Elbow Room, Green Room Award for Physical Performance, the Green Room Award for Cutorial and Artistic Direction, Excellence in Innovation, Excellence in Public Works, Age and Disability LG Pro Award Commendation. I think we need to highlight those and I want to thank all the officers that come together to not only who are a part of those awards, but also in addition to that who spent several hours and weeks to put this together, so thank you very much. I'll put that item to the wa, to the vote, all those in favour? Thank you, that's been carried unanimously. The next report we have to consider this evening is item number nine point three, the draft memorial policies. Now, is there any questions, are there any questions to the officers? Councillor Greco? Now, is there any questions? Are there any questions to the officers? Councillor Greco?
Thank you, Mayor Messina. I do have some questions and I just want to say-
Just one moment councillor Greco, you have a question. Can I have the officers please come to the centre table? Thank you. We'll just wait for that. Thanks councillor Greco. Thank you. Councillor Greco?
Thank you, Mayor Messina. Look, I do have a question. I note that the proposed memorial policy has some sort of emphasis on recognising unrepresented people in communities and it talks about prioritising applications from that, from those cohorts in our community. But I just want to understand how the memorial policy will actually do that.
Thank you councillor Greco. I'll refer to the manager of corporate governance, Jacinda Stephens, to provide a response on that.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. The way that we would prioritise it is to give consideration of any request from unrepresented, or sorry, underrepresented or marginalised people in alignment with the toward equity framework. So what that means is if we had a range of requests that come through, that we would put them to the top of the list.
Councillor Greco, do you have a supplementary question?
Further supplementary question? The other question that I had was that the policy talks about a nexus between the historic event, the placement of a memorial with the space or the land on which it is to be placed. And I was just wondering how that would fit with applications that do not have a specific reference to a space. And for example, I'll just give an example of some of those that we've had in our city, the genocide memorial, the Lebanese immigrant memorial, that don't have any reference to Ray Bravon Garden. But if we were to adopt this policy, they could technically be excluded from being accepted as valid applications.
Thank you councillor Greco.
So through you, Madam Chair. What we would propose is that we would extend the recommendations of approval. So if there's a strong community interest but no alignment with the policy, then the committee will refer it to the council for them to make a decision.
Councillor Greco, are there any further questions to the officers? As there are no further questions, we will now move into debate. Councillor Greco, do you have a motion?
I have an alternative motion that I'd like to put forward.
Is this the one you circulated earlier councillor Greco?
Yes, it's been distributed.
Thank you. I'll wait for that to come on the screen and then I'll ask you to confirm if that's your alternative motion. Councillor Greco, can I just confirm that that is your alternative motion? Thank you. Do I have a second? Oh, just one moment, I'll wait for the, I'll wait for the nod from councillors who have read that. Do we have, I will allow questions to the officers, given that this is an alternative motion, alternate motion. Do we have any questions in relation to this alternate motion to the officers? I will allow questions given that it was circulated quite late in the afternoon.
Mayor, without having both, I don't understand and I can't work fast enough-
Yep.
-to understand what the amendments are. So if I could just get clarity as to the amendment, you know, how this differs from the recommendation, I think that would help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Through you, Madam Chair. So in point one, the original motion stopped at appendix A to this report. So we're asking to it to be extended with the following amendments to give clarity within the policy where the amendment's made. It's the underlying wording that will be included in the policy. So in the policy, there is a section titled Cultural and Equity Consideration. So within that paragraph, in paragraph three, we would include those words. And in one B, it would be the extension of the committee will determine if the request needs to progress to council for consideration. Sorry, if there is a strong community interest, that last paragraph will be included.
Thank you. Councillor Dimitriades, you have a question?
Yes. So in terms of part one B, that's what was proposed by officers, I believe that that's what you said in regards to the question, but it wasn't in the policy, is that right? So now it's just adding it in the policy just for clarification, is that right?
Yes. Through you, Madam Chair. So the recommendations of the memorials committee will be made to council executive management team, who will determine if the request needs to progress to council. That's currently in the policy. So we're asking for it to be extended with that last paragraph that says if there is a strong community.
Are there any, yes, you have a supplementary, yes?
Sorry, just for clarity, but that's what, that's what was recommended anyway that would happen, is that right? So if there is strong community interest, it would be referred to council anyway, is that right? So there's not really any, any, so it's what would happen anyway, is that right?
That's right. That's what we're putting it to make it stronger, that we will in fact refer it to council.
Councillor McCarthy?
Thanks, Mayor. Sorry, this is the first time I've seen these, so it must have come through late in the day. Can we just get an indication from officers if there are any, I mean, obviously we're potentially rewording elements here, it's minor and I don't see an issue, but I just want to see if there's any other impacts that we should be aware of in relation to those changes. So are those changes, do those changes need to be reflected elsewhere in the policy? I suppose just to ensure that we have a consistent policy. I don't like word smithing motions, so I'm going to ask the question.
Thank you councillor McCarthy.
Through you, Madam Chair. There is no impact. The intent of the policy is to do those things anyway, but it's just to make it really clear.
Yep, just to highlight it. Thank you. Are there any further questions? No? Do I have a second? Yep. Councillor Lawrence, as the mover of the alternate motion, would you like to speak to it councillor Greco?
Thank you councillor, Mayor Messina. First of all, I want to thank officers for their work in bringing this to us and all the effort that's gone around trying to get some wording around our future memorial policy. I think that these sorts of policies are the things that actually give Darabben its character and give Darabben the way that Darabben projects itself to the community. And we have to take extra attention that when we develop policies like this, that there aren't any inadvertent omissions or understatements. Because inadvertent omissions or understatements then do not deliver the outcomes that we propose or that we intend to have. And that's why I've asked the questions that I did. And that's why I've moved this alternate motion to what the officers recommended in order to reinforce some of the points that need to be made. And those points are basically is that we have a number of memorials in our city and I mentioned a few during question time. And there are others, like there's the peace poles at the back of the intercultural centre. There's no link with the place or the space there in a sense. But and so the policy that we have now, or that was being proposed originally, would in a sense had made it technically invalid to make that sort of application because there's no nexus between the memorial that's been proposed with the space that it's going to be placed in. And because we have such a diverse community, some of the things cannot find themselves have a particular space where that can be placed or a recognisable area because of the nature. For example, you know, we're talking about Diwali at the moment. If we were to have a memorial in relation to Gandhi, the, you know, Indian former president and activist, where would be the space that we would put that? And how would we recognise that? So we have to be explicit when we write these policies that we don't inadvertently omit the composition of our city. So I've put forward these words and I thank officers for helping me construct these words. And I think it's important that they form part of the policy to create that greater clarity. I would have gone further frankly than the words that we have here, but just in the time that we had this afternoon to unpack this sort of thing, I can live with this. But I really welcome a future opportunity where we can go further in depth and have a much more explicit and inclusive memorial policy.
Thank you councillor Greco. Councillor Greco, as the second, councillor Lawrence, would you like to speak to the alternate motion?
Yes, thanks, Mayor Messina. Yes, look, I'll just pick up on the point and congratulate councillor Greco for adding some things to this in terms of focus. I suppose the issue here is that some of the policy related to space and land, and obviously that is significant to First Nations people because we're just coming to terms with relearning this landscape through their, through their eyes and their experience and their history now. So we're getting to rename this landscape. But one of the things about, you know, Darabben or Melbourne, it was really like the Wild West. It was a gold rush mentality. There was wild drinking in the streets of Fitzroy and Northkirk and everywhere else. Publicans got to name their streets quite often. Free beer was flowing at council elections. And we basically have some pretty colourful characters named along our streets. And in terms of memorials, the most representative memorials we have are actually war ones because they represent all the people who actually went to war, which was the total society. So it's good to see this new war memorial at Bandura representing those who went to psychiatric hospitals and paid a price. And they're now being rewritten back in the history, as I might say, women like my grandmother who served, who were not recognised earlier. So these, these underrepresentations and marginalised people, we've just said, actually are 80% of the population because really only rich people have been able to get memorials and since then dominating cultures. So while I sort of, a little bit easy with underrepresented and marginalised, I think we're actually talking about 80% of the community-
Thank you.
-and the post-war community in particular getting reflected. So-
Thank you councillor Lawrence.
That community thing we needed added.
Thank you councillor Lawrence. Are there any councillors who wish to speak in opposition to the motion? Are there any further speakers? As there are no further speakers, I'll now put that item to the vote. All those in favour? Thank you councillors, that's been carried unanimously. The next item on the agenda we have to consider this evening in terms of the report is the East Preston Community Centre Transition Plan Update. Are there any questions to the officers? Councillors, do I have a motion? Councillor Greco?
Yes, Mayor Messina, I have an alternative motion.
Is this one that you circulated? What I'll do is I'll wait for that to come up on the screen and then, just one moment, I need to make sure that it's the right one. Then I'll ask councillor Greco, then I'll ask if there's any questions and then I'll ask for a second. Councillor Greco, can I just confirm that that is your alternate motion?
Yes, it is, Mayor.
Thank you. Are there any questions to the officers? Councillors? No? Councillor Williams, I'm assuming you're seconding the alternate motion? Thank you. As the mover of the alternate motion, councillor Greco, would you like to speak to them?
Thank you, Mayor Messina. Look, first of all, again, I want to thank officers for bringing this update to us and also outlining to us what some of the difficulties have been in trying to find an outside operator for the, for the centre. Given that we have not been able to find an operator, given the economic circumstances and given COVID and other operators that function in this space have not been able to extend themselves to provide, assist council in providing this service. Having said that, what this motion therefore does is that it basically says, you know, why do we need to basically outsource this service? Why can't this service actually continue to be done in-house? My point in relation to that is that we, why I put this motion is that we recognise and we all recognise, and I've got a report here, a council report, which is the Darabben Health and Wellbeing Propified December 2020, which highlights that that neighbourhood includes the area known as the Northland Activity Centre. This area has the lowest SEFA index in Darabben and is ranked amongst the lowest in the country, in the fourth percentile. When we think about that, councillors, we've got an area which has one of the lower, which lowest SEFA indexes, one of the most disadvantaged areas, and we're trying to outsource it. I just can't accept that, councillors. And I think that we have to bite the bullet and continue this service in-house indefinitely. It could be in some distant future that we can come back and revisit it. And what also the motion talks about is that we should look at models that we can put in place, management models, but within the auspices of it still being a council-run facility. It's not impossible to do that. I think we're creative enough to find models that enable council in collaboration with the community to run a service like this, a very much needed service in a very much needed area. So and also what the third part of the motion says is that we put it to future budget processes in terms of providing for the extra money that will be needed to run, to run this service. At the moment, it's estimated to be at $170,000. And I put that into some sort of context, councillors. It's $170,000 for a very underprivileged area when we've spent over $120 million, councillors, in the southern part of our city. And I think that those figures just speak for themselves. So I would really urge councillors to seriously consider about this and whether we're going to go down the path of outsourcing or doing things in-house.
Thank you councillor Greco. Before I move over to councillor Rennie, sorry councillor Williams, I notice there's some graphical errors in the alternate motion. So as a council-run centre and also as a council-run centre in item number two, line number two, so there's another extra word in there.
Can we just take the A?
Oh, just take out the A. Yeah, okay. Councillor Williams?
East Preston Community Centre is located near Northland Shopping Centre and Darabben Council certainly runs at the community centre. Tonight's report suggests in the near future council should consider undertaking an expression of interest for a new operator to manage the East Preston Community House. Does this mean that this council is considering this for all community centres? I doubt it because those centres are not losing money. Recent Australian Bureau statistics has flagged that this area is the highest socially economically disadvantaged, not just in Reservoir, not in Darabben, not in Melbourne, not in Victoria, but actually in all of Australia. Certainly not a record I'm sure Yarra Council would be proud of. I hope it's not the reason why council is considering passing the baton by going to tender so another operator to manage the site to make it more profitable. Seriously, you cannot cut and put a price on a person's health and wellbeing. This is no ordinary community centre. It offers a wide range of activities and a combination of outreach services to our most vulnerable, not only that, but it's also a place where people can connect and come together and engage so they are not isolated and they feel safe to do so. It offers a number of services including GPs, dental, optometrists, speech therapists, physiotherapists, men shared short courses and yoga for elderly. Darabben Council has an obligation in supporting every resident, no matter what their financial or social economic status is. As the ward councillor for the area, I am proud that this is a safe place where this council has continued in the past supporting families during the COVID, as many of them do not speak English, have been hugely impacted by isolation because of the COVID and many- have been hugely impacted by isolation because of the COVID and many lockdowns. On special open days, it brings a diverse community together. It holds celebrations and events that connects our most vulnerable
Thank you.
in the community and they feel safe doing so.
Thank you councillor Williams. Is there anybody in opposition to this alternate motion? Councillor Rennie?
Thank you. I think this debate's actually been turned into something that it's not. There is no suggestion anywhere that council seek to not continue to fund services and not deliver for the community any Reservoir that benefits very much from this service. I don't think we should close the door to future management arrangements which may actually deliver more to the community. $170,000 is inadequate to deliver all the services that the community needs. And there are many, many opportunities for growth and grant funding which are available to small not-for-profit organisations which are not available to council. And so by constraining the future operation of the East Preston Community Centre in this way, we may actually constrain the opportunities for the community to have additional services. I want to give you an example. Recently, the state government had the Living Local Suburban Development Fund. If council applied for this fund, council had to foot fifty percent of the cost of any project, which means that if council had applied, for example, for an improvement to this centre that was worth $400,000, council had to come up with $200,000. If a not-for-profit applied for the same grant funding, they only had to come up with $15,000, which would mean that a not-for-profit could potentially deliver more for our resources and could value add a lot. The other thing about not-for-profits, and we see this in places like Diverse, that your community health is they can be incredibly nimble, they can be flexible, they can be responsive, they can actually get things done very, very quickly and often much more so than council. So I'm not presuming what the best future model might be. I just don't think we should say what it should be tonight. I think that there are many opportunities which we might close the door to if we go down this path.
Thank you councillor Rennie. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Lawrence?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Messina. Yeah, during the lockdown, it was very challenging living in Reservoir and with the one hour and with the five Ks through that period, we were sort of in and out. And I did go with councillor Williams often to the events that were held at this centre. And, you know, the kind of impact it had in terms of having people from that community singing, dancing, some amazing talent there and amazing activities and interactions there is just extraordinary what the council was doing and delivering. Now, that's probably the only place in the city, not the only place, but it's one place in the city where, you know, 1956 stock housing has been falling apart for some time, concrete housing that was temporary for the Olympics. It's been, you know, a place of intergenerational disadvantage. And now we've rezoned it. Of course, Northland Structure Plan fell away, so we didn't get docklands just south of there. But we've rezoned that to Sydney-style forty-four storeys, five-storey units throughout there. Those big units going on top of this area in this valley are not going to bring social capital or wealth into that city there. They're going to bring transitional workers, transitional people who also have social capital deficits. This is one place where government subsidy and government largesse, our largesse, should be maintained because the future there will be a different kind of temporary underpaid workers, gee workers, precarious economy, going to be overlaid, a refugee and an intergenerational poverty neighbourhood.
Thank you councillor Lawrence.
We really need to think of the future.
Are there any further speakers? No? I'll put that item to... Right reply, yes councillor?
Thank you, Mayor Messina. I'll just make a couple of points. One is that the recent census data showed us that the number of households with over $3,000 per week income is increasing. The number of households with under $1,000 per week income is also increasing, which shows that there's a polarisation occurring right before our doorstep. So we have to have that, we have to be conscious of that. The other thing is it's obvious that there's been market failure here. No provider, not-for-profit or otherwise, is prepared to go in and do it at the price that we asked them to do it. And it seems that they can't deliver the services that we've asked them to do. The other point is that the Reservoir neighbourhood has, it's only after a whole number of years, once it finally and firmly established itself, that we decided to look at different models. And also finally, I would say, or one of the final points is that I've sensed, strong sense, you know, what does the community think? I mean, do we just go to a bunch of consultants and ask them to tell us whether we should privatise this or not or outsource this? What about the community? I'm sure that many of the people that use that service would expect council to still invest in that service in a direct manner. And so we should have sort of this direct communication with the community. So on those bases, councillors, I think it's, you know, this is a point that actually characterises who we are. We've got the most vulnerable area in our city. Is council going to come in there, cover for market failure, where other providers are not willing to go there at the price that we've asked them to do it? So we need to step in, step in firmly, step in with a, and also show that we're going to be there for the long haul.
Thank you, that's time. Councillors, I'll put this item to the vote. All those in favour? That's councillor Williams, councillor McCarthy, councillor Metriatus, councillor Williams, councillor Lawrence, councillor Messina and councillor Greco. All those against councillor Hannon and councillor Rennie, that item has been passed. Item number nine point five, Darabin libraries fines. Are there any questions? I said passed, I meant carried, sorry. Are there any questions to the officers in relation to item number nine point five? No? Councillors, do I have a motion? Councillor Rennie?
Thank you, Mayor Messina. There's a motion with a slight addition on the officer's recommendation. I'll ask if the staff could please put that up.
Before I ask for a secondor, before I ask for a secondor, I'll make sure that it's your alternate motion. Do I have a secondor? Seconded by councillor McCarthy. Councillor Rennie, as the mover, would you like to speak to it?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Messina. I'm absolutely delighted this item has come before us tonight after careful consideration by staff who looked at and noticed a motion that I submitted, which was carried unanimously a number of months ago. And careful consideration of this matter actually reveals that the evidence is pretty clear that library fines don't do much to encourage people to return items on time, but they do actually cause some people to be excluded and to stop using libraries. And library fines are an equity issue in that they tend to impact most on those people with fewest access to resources. So eliminating library fines is a really positive step towards more equity and access for all people in our community. And one of the important things that we have in our council plan is to see the proportion of active library users increase. And so this is not just about library fines for overdue books. It's also a very important step towards increasing active participation in Darabin libraries. And libraries right across Victoria are running an important campaign called Libraries Change Lives. And that's because access to libraries and all of the services and things that they offer can be transformational. I was a young person who lived in the library pretty much when I was a kid. I got off the tram after school and I walked into the library on my way home and spent hours there. The library staff were so familiar with me that when I did work experience there as a sixteen-year-old, they called me up the next week and offered me a job. And I then spent eight years or so working part-time in my local library. It was a safe place, it was a refuge, it was somewhere I could escape into the world of books. I was shelving books on the shelves before I was in high school. I think it was probably to the frustration of librarians because I'm not sure I always put them where they were supposed to go. But I say this because I know firsthand the difference libraries can make. And one of the things about library fines is that they impact a great deal on families. And that's because the people who tend to cop the biggest fines are families who go in and take away armfuls of picture books, which is a wonderful thing for children's literacy and development. And, you know, understandably, on the day those library books are due back, sometimes, you know, someone's sick and people don't make it to the library and so they don't end up with one overdue item, they end up with twenty overdue items. And if that goes on for a week or two, then the fines mount up. And for some families, that will make the difference in terms of not getting back to the library. So this is an exceptionally important piece of work, both for children's literacy, for our community's enjoyment of the library and for equity and inclusion. And I commend it to you and I thank all of the staff who have been involved and particularly the wonderful staff in our libraries.
Thank you. Councillor McCarthy as a secondor, would you like to speak to the revised or the addition to the officer's recommendation? Item number three.
Thanks, mayor. I'll keep it brief, but what a great, small Christmas present to, I think, to bring to the community.
Merry Christmas.
In the sense that, and I think councillor Rennie has absolutely nailed it, but so she should, knowing our library's probably better than any councillor here, having a passion in relation to the the work that libraries can do as places of refuge for people, the work that libraries can do as community centres and fair enough, the role that libraries play in connecting every generation with each other in a way that's meaningful. And I think this is not, yes, there is a bottom-line impact to council, but it's small in the context of what we're doing here. But what is more important actually here is the unlocking of opportunity for a whole lot of people in our community who, because of a small fine, because of things going on in their lives and all the challenges that that can present in actually getting on top of that, brings them back into the library. So I really welcome this. I want to congratulate councillor Rennie on her continued advocacy in this regard because she has brought this to this chamber on multiple occasions and certainly through the council plan process. But I wanted to also recognise that this is not, we're not the first council to do this. A whole lot of councils have done this. So in fact, we're planning to catch up on this issue. It's overdue for Darabin to get on board, but no longer should an overdue fine be applied to our community. And I hope, yes, it talks about an amnesty for the period until thirty June, but I hope that's next year. But I hope it's a continuing approach that we take in this city. And that's it, thanks.
Thank you councillor McCarthy. Are there anybody, are there any councillors who wish to speak against the revised officer's recommendation? Are there any further speakers? I'll put this item to the vote. All those in favour? Thank you, that's been carried unanimously. The next item we have to consider is item number nine point six, the intention to declare a special charge Solar Saver Batch Number One. Are there any questions, councillors, to the officers? No questions, we will now move... Oh, you have a question? You're moving... Do I have a motion, councillor? Thank you. Do I have a secondor? Councillor Rennie, so it's moved by councillor McCarthy, seconded by councillor Rennie. Would you like to speak to, as the mover, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thanks, mayor. It's been a little while since we've had one of these come to us, but I think it's always great. I feel like a bit of a tradition getting up to declare a special charge scheme. I don't know if there's anything that's quite like seeing this program continue to deliver for our community. In this case, we are talking about a new batch of the Solar Saver Scheme, delivering solar with that fantastic ten-year payback period, as we know through the special charge scheme. This includes thirty-six households that are involved in this batch. It's going to deliver 179.2 kilowatts of solar capacity. Why is this important? Well, because for each of those households, they have gone through the assessment process. They've gone through the process of working with council to assess the suitability of their property, their roof space for solar. They've gone through the processes to get on this list, to get in this space and to get with this program. They also would meet other criteria that council sets in regards to eligibility. Because as councillors would know, we have a two-stream approach here. We have the one stream, which is our low-income stream, and the other stream is our general stream, which is effectively a sort of a group purchasing approach. Councillors, the solar that's contributed here contributes overall to our city target of both renewable energy and emissions reduction. And so I want to congratulate all the households that are involved in this batch and all the previous batches of the Solar Saver Program. And importantly, recognise that this program was, in fact, I think the catalyst for a lot of the work that's happened through Solar Victoria, but it continues to operate and continues to deliver something very special for our community. And that's why it is the envy of many councils. And as you mentioned earlier, mayor, also won many awards in many years past and in fact was the genesis for our collective thinking for the VECO project as well. If we can do this for ourselves, why wouldn't we do it for our households? If we can do this for our council, why wouldn't we do it for other councils? So that approach is very Darabin. Really proud, once again, to have another batch coming through and I look forward to the next iteration of this as well.
Thank you councillor McCarthy. Councillor Rennie, as the secondor, would you like to speak?
No, thank you councillor McCarthy's covered it.
Are there any councillors in opposition? I'll put that... Any further speakers before we put that to the vote? All those, I'll ask for a vote. All those in favour? Thank you, that's been carried unanimously. The next item we have to consider this evening is item number nine point seven, Solar Saver Selection of New Service Provider for Round 4.2 2023 to 2025. Are there any questions to the officers, councillors? Is there none? Do we have a motion? Councillor Williams? Okay, that's all right. Do we have, councillors, is there a motion?
Happy to move the motion, mayor, and if the officers can put forward the recommended name on screen.
Thank you councillor McCarthy. Are there any... Do we have a secondor for the officer's recommendation? Councillor Greco? Councillor McCarthy, as the mover, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, mayor. So firstly, a big thank you to our officers for their work in putting together this report and also going through the process to have the request for tender process, to have the recommendation that you see here before you. And I'd like to, assuming that this motion is successful, recognise the great efforts of the Environment Shop, not just now and in the future, but also in the past as well because the Environment Shop has been involved with the Solar Saver Program at various times. In fact, I think in the very first iteration, they were the supplier of the Solar Saver System. So it is great to see them involved again. In this case, we are actually looking at the first expansion of the Solar Saver Program, not in terms of the eligibility, but in terms of the offering. Because we are moving from just offering the solar installations, rooftop solar, which as councillors would know, has expanded from the original smaller systems when we did our first program with pensioner households to then community centres and then more recently expanding the size of the systems to much larger ten-kilowatt systems and in fact even larger for commercial entities as well. Here we have the introduction of reverse cycle air conditioning, which is a really fantastic and complementary type of technology. It is highly efficient, it is highly portable, it's easily to install. And if you've ever seen the process of assessment for reverse cycle air conditioning, it starts with actually understanding how people live. And so the process that we've gone through and the process that we will go through for the solar assessments is very similar to what we do for reverse cycle and the financing is amazing. So we can see a payback period for residents and an emissions reduction period for residents that is significant. What we are doing here is also helping our households get off gas. So people can actually get rid of their gas bill, can actually get rid of their gas meter, reduce their household expenditure on energy by installing reverse cycle air conditioning. And they can do it now using the Solar Saver Scheme. And they can do it now using the Solar Saver, um, scheme, uh, so they actually can pay back the cost over time. Um, there are obviously parameters here, um, and as council, councillors would see from the assessment, uh, the, one of the critical things, of course, is the focus on our vulnerable households, Mayor. And that is what Solar Savers began as and continues to be. Um, so I want to thank the officers, uh, for all their work here and also congratulate the people that will be signing onto this and benefiting from the new scheme, and we look forward to working with the Enviro Group as well. Thanks.
Thank you councillor McCarthy. Before I go over to councillor Greco, I just want to note that the, we're moving, you're moving the officer's recommendations with the, um, item number one, number two, with the item, the, the insertion of the Environment Shop proprietor limit as the trustee for the environment trust, Futures Trust trading as Enviro Group. Thank you. Councillor Greco.
Thank you, Member Seena. Look, I, I'd just like to make a few remarks and, and just to, um, add on to what councillor McCarthy has aptly, um, described, um, uh, we have a situation where we're progressing this scheme, where as councillor McCarthy said, we're moving towards, um, uh, reverse cycle, um, air, air conditioning, which is a, a further advance in terms of, um, um, minimizing the, the carbon footprint and complementing, uh, the solar, solar panel, um, scheme. Uh, I, I think, um, just looking ahead, um, I think that once, um, we are able to consolidate this new batch of, um, um, services that we provide to our community, that we can look to into, into not, I don't think the distant future, but perhaps, um, um, applying the principles of this scheme, perhaps to, um, um, domestic batteries, and also applying the principles of this scheme to, um, also, um, other, other forms of, um, uh, 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 electrical appliances in the home, like in, in ducted stoves and things like that. I, I think, um, we really could take this a lot further, but I think we have to do it in, in small steps. And we've been successful in doing that. We haven't gone into this thing yet. We, we started off in a very, um, small way. Uh, we started off with, um, the most vulnerable in our community, and we still have a focus with the most vulnerable in our community, providing, uh, our Solar Savers, um, 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 scheme to them. But we're progressing it out, and I think that the model that we have is a proven model. Uh, it's a, it's a model that works, and, um, and I hope that in the future we can extend it. And even to extending it to, um, um, retrofitting a lot of the homes that are in our city, which are older homes that actually can, uh, better conserve the energy that they do consume.
Thank you councillor Greco. Are there any councillors who wish to speak in opposition to this motion? Are there any further speakers? I'll put this item to the vote. All those in favour? Thank you. That's been carried unanimously. The next report we have to consider this evening is item number nine point eight, the Property Matters. Are there any questions to the officers first? As I know, questions, councillors, do I have a motion? Councillor Williams? Do I have a second, uh? Councillor McCarthy. Councillor Williams, would you like to, as the mover, would you like to speak to the, to the item?
Sorry.
That's all right. It's one of those nights tonight. It's okay. Can we stop the clock? Can we stop the clock? We've got a few moments. It's okay. We catch our breath.
Apologies for that.
That's okay.
Um, this is pretty straightforward, um, in reference to in reference to three items that we have on the agenda. So we have a two, two proposal for discontinue right of way, one in, um, one 38 Wood Street and 31 Maplewood Street in Preston. The other one is, um, in 107 Keon Parade and 76 Argyle Avenue in Reservoir. And the third item, which is unusual, which is in reference to Calamata Lane. So the first two I'll, I'll address straight away, which is in reference to, uh, council has made the decision to discontinue this right of way and to sell it by private treaty. And the adjoining owner will, um, is, uh, will be taking possession of that and will be purchasing that. Um, this is pretty simple, by following the statutory discontinuance process. And notification was received by the residents, um, who were wanting to require the, the site. And all neighbours that were adjoining the, um, the property were notified, but there were no submissions that were received. In reference to the third item, which is, um, Calamata Place, we will, um, be looking at, um, or we already have. Um, councils agreed to, uh, change the laneway to Calamata Place, which we had a, an event over the weekend for, which I believe that a couple of our councils, including yourself, Mayor, that, um, attended to that, and apparently it was quite, um, um, a, a wonderful celebration, I believe. Um, in reference to that, I'm not sure exactly how, because I don't think we've ever done this before, where we've actually named a laneway before. So this is quite interesting that, uh, it will actually be, um, uh, I guess advertised, and, um, our council and our CEO will actually handle that part of it in reference to making sure that that is, uh, the name will be registered in the future.
Thank you councillor Williams. Councillor McCarthy? As the second, would you like to?
Uh, thanks, Mayor. Councillor Williams has covered it off, uh, really well. I just wanted to, um, I suppose just pick up on that final part of this, um, situation in relation to Calamata Place, which is the name that council had endorsed. And just to be really clear that, um, this is the result of the fact that council actually has to go through to a, a state government entity, which is known as Geographic Names Victoria. So whilst council, um, had been happy to endorse the request, uh, following the consultation process, um, and that was the unanimous, um, vote to support, um, the move to name that nameway Calamata Place, uh, it's actually not ultimately our decision. And I think it's worth noting that, that actually that decision is verified and, and approved and signed off, um, through Geographic Names Victoria. Um, their concern, uh, as, as the report refers to, um, is that it's a lane, not a place. And so by virtue of their definition and their statutory role in this process, they have the ability to come back to us and say, we don't accept that. Here are some alternatives or consider some alternatives. Just to be clear, um, as a result of, if this resolution is adopted, um, then what that effectively does is allow officers to go back to the Geographic Names Victoria entity, amend the application, obviously, and, uh, and move ahead. Um, but obviously it's, what's really important is that we have a, a community organisation, um, that has been, you know, significantly involved in advocating. So I'm sure that our officers, um, have already communicated with them about this situation, but they will be formally informed and, uh, and no doubt there will need to be a redoing of the, the plaque, Mayor, which I understand you opened on, um, over the weekend as well. But I think the name, um, of Calamata will continue, um, in this place. It will just be a lane.
Thank you councillor McCarthy. Uh, are there any, um, councillors who wish to speak in, in opposition to the motion? Are there any further speakers? Councillor Lawrence?
Um, yes, um, thank you, Mayor Messina. Obviously, this, uh, property matters often, uh, deals with, um, the transfer of ownership of lanes. And, um, in, in, um, this one, we're also talking about the transformation of a lane or a place or a thing or a wallah. I don't know. There's many things, ways to call a thing a thing. Um, to something that represents a deep, uh, culture, uh, part of Northkirk, part of Thornbury, part of the city of Darabban, the Greek culture. And, um, we are mentioning the kind of peculiarities of and hierarchy of place names. And I think, you know, one thing I recall, um, being associated, uh, with north central Victoria is we've been at the whims of these bureaucrats for a while. So someone must have done some classical study and they named Mount Macedon, Mount Macedon. Obviously, it's a significant feature for Aboriginal people, indigenous people. They named, um, Mount Alexander after Alexander himself, who's never stepped foot there. Um, and, um, they named it Campasby River, so they, a whole se- series of classical flourishes of Greek culture in the middle of central Victoria that had no meaning. Here, we're bringing, um, Greek culture into laneways of the city of Darabban, where it's been here strong and still is strong, and it's an appropriate, uh, cultural, um, renaming. So that's where we should be going. And, um, yes, um, I'll leave central Victoria to central Victorians.
Thank you councillor Lawrence. Are there any further speakers? Before we put this item to the vote, I do want to, I also acknowledge, um, the name changing of that, of the laneway in, um, in Northkirk and Thornbury. And I want to congratulate councillor Dimitri Artis on her ongoing stakeholder engagement in ensuring this comes to chambers. And councillor Dimitri Artis and I did attend the opening of the laneway, and it was very moving. Um, it's an, it's an example of how much place, social connection, um, means to our multicultural communities. So I just want to say that. Um, councillors, let's put this item to the vote. All those in favour? Thank you. That's been carried unanimously. The next report we have to consider this evening is item number nine point nine, the Governance Report, October 2022. Do we have any questions to the officers? Councillors, do I have a motion? Councillor McCarthy?
Remove the recommendation, Mayor.
Do we have a second, uh, councillor? That's moved by councillor McCarthy, seconded by councillor, uh, Rennie. Um, councillor McCarthy as the mover, would you like to speak to the?
Uh, look, I'll, I'll keep it brief. Um, councillors, uh, would recall this governance report brings together a whole range of items, um, in one handy report, but sometimes those items can be, um, quite diverse. And so in this case, uh, obviously we have, uh, a noting, um, in relation to, um, councillor Newton being on parental leave. Um, and we do wish her well in these, um, in these exciting times. Um, also, we also have, uh, notes in relation, which are noted, um, but they are for the benefit of both council and the community, um, in relation to the arrangements, uh, that are now in place for attendance at meetings, both council meetings and planning committee meetings, um, under the new hybrid situation and the process and protocol, um, that needs to be followed. And I think it's worth just noting that there is a lot of work that goes into making this possible. Um, so it is actually incumbent upon councillors to, uh, to obviously follow the process here, um, so that our organisation, um, all the people that do the behind-scenes work don't do work that's not required, but can do the work in time when it is. Uh, there are a number of instruments of delegation councillors, which, um, you would have, uh, you would have followed. And of course, also the summary of the advisory committees and the reports by mayors and councillors. Um, but I just wanted to highlight those two particular items. And obviously, I'm sure I, I'm joined by all councillors in wishing councillor Newton all the best, um, with her leave and also, um, the early days of being a new mum. And, uh, and as we, um, I think we all, as councillors, those of us who've had the experience of having, uh, children while on council, it is a significant, um, uh, significant experience if you, if you actually have a child be, while being a councillor, because you actually want to stay connected and engaged. Um, so, uh, we wish her all the best, but we encourage her to ta, to take some, some leave as well. Thanks very much, Mayor.
Thank you councillor McCarthy. Councillor Rennie?
Councillor McCarthy's covered it. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any speakers in opposition to the motion? I'll put that item to the vote. All those in favour? Thank you councillors. That's been carried unanimously. The next report we have to consider this evening is item number nine point 10, CT 202 double 152, the Con- Contract Award Security Services Panel, including electronic security, CCTV and guards. Are there any questions to the officers, councillors? Councillors, do I have a motion? Councillors? Councillor Rennie?
Thank you. I'd like to move the recommendation and I'll ask the staff if they could, um, put in the successful award. Thank you.
Can I just confirm that that's, they are, they are your additions?
Yes, that's what I was expecting.
Thank you. Councillor McCarthy, sec, as this, as this, you're seconding that motion? Thank you. Councillor Rennie, would you like to speak to the, your motion?
So this is a fairly typical contract-type award that comes to council. Um, it exceeds the amount that can be done under delegation, and that's why it's a decision of council laws. But I think it's worth the community understanding that council laws don't in any way get involved with the assessment of tenderers. Uh, that process is done by a really skilled and qualified panel, um, with good probity measures in place to make sure that everyone is assessed, uh, according to transparent criteria. So this particular contract is necessary to ensure that council can meet its obligations and adhere to a wide range of security services across Darabban's facilities. And you can imagine that council has many, many facilities, all of which have different security needs. Um, some of those involve, um, reactive maintenance, some of them involve electronic access, CCTV, security, and, uh, for this purpose, uh, there are a number of different awardees. I congratulate them on obviously putting the time and effort into putting together quality submissions to council so that we can be sure that the services that are delivered will be delivered to a high standard and within our budget envelope. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Rennie. As the second, councillor McCarthy, would you like to? Thank you. Are there any councillors in opposition to this op, this recommendation? Motion? I'll put that item to the vote. All those in favour? Thank you councillors. That's been carried unanimously. The next item we have to consider is ni, item number nine point one one, um, CT 202 one five, two, 202 153, Contract Variation for the Intercultural Centre Construction. Are there any questions to the officers? There are no questions? Do I have a motion councillors? Councillor Greco? Yes? You're moving the officer's recommendation? Do I have a second? That's moved by councillor Greco and seconded by councillor McCarthy. Councillor Greco, as the mover, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, look, very briefly, I think the report's self-explanatory. Um, it's, it's asking for, uh, an increase in the contingency fund, uh, in relation to this project. And that's quite obvious, given, um, uh, the COVID situation. There's a whole list of reasons which, um, uh, which has, uh, increased, um, the potential cost of construction. You sort of hear out there in the, um, um, in, in the sector, in the housing sector, where people are saying that i- i- if you're thinking of doing a renovation or a home improvement or anything like that, just add 30% of the previous quote that you, that you would have got, say, um, a few months ago. So, you know, very, we're talking at a much bigger scale, obviously, uh, much bigger commitment. And, uh, and, and that's what we're confronted with. Um, we need to finish this project. Um, and I'll just remind councillors for the ones, uh, this is a project that goes back about 25 years. When it was first raised in, at council, and I remember I was, um, much younger back then, um, the Intercultural Centre was raised back then, nearly 25 years ago. It's almost come into fruition. Um, COVID's getting a little bit in the way of it, and, but, uh, I'm sure that it will be delivered. And, uh, if we pass this motion tonight, there'll be enough funds there with the contingency, uh, in order to, um, realise this important, um, iconic, um, uh, place for our, um, intercultural community.
Thank you. Um, we're just going to change the heading because it's incorrect. So just bear with us a moment before I go to the second, councillor McCarthy. The heading is incorrect councillor. Thank you. Can I just get you to tick that off councillor Greco and then councillor McCarthy? Thank you. We've heard from councillor Greco. Now we're going to go to the, the second, councillor McCarthy. Would you like to speak to the motion?
Um, thanks, Mayor. I, I did want to, um, councillor Greco's covered off the, um, the, the mechanics of this. I did want to, uh, highlight the fact that this report, um, we don't often get reports that are amid construction or nearing completion, where we effectively get a bit of a progress report on the project. And as councillors would see, um, we are expecting, um, for project completion. I think it says here November 2022, which is not that far away. Um, so Mayor, that's something very exciting for, um, certainly, uh, this, this, this period for all of us. Um, but one, one thing I did want to highlight, which the report does give credit to, is actually is actually the really collaborative working relationship that council is having with its contractor. And there is some great commentary in there, in the report, that talks about the way in which council, the architect and the contractor are working together to deliver this outcome significantly. And I think this is worth highlighting, because council has made a commitment in its social and sustainable procurement policy, is that the contractors themselves, in this case, has workforce and subcontractors from 26 national backgrounds. So if we talk in this chamber about how we want to create opportunity through our investments, in this case, it's a considerable amount of money. We also want to make sure that we are seeing those same sorts of outcomes through the people and organisations that we contract to work with us. And in this case, I think we've got a really great story to tell. An intercultural centre that is being built by an intercultural community. And I think there's a great story for us, mayor. And when this does get opened, whenever that is, it's going to be one of the stories that we can tell. Is that this is a centre which, as councillor Greco has kindly and rightly pointed out, has a long history. But also, this latest iteration of what the Intercultural Centre is is the result of an intercultural community coming together to actually build it and do that work.
Thank you. I look forward to the opening. Thanks, councillor McCarthy. Are there any councillors in opposition to this motion? Are there any further speakers? Councillor Lawrence?
Yes, ma'am, I seen it. Look, this is really exciting. Councillor Greco mentioned the 25-year journey here. Of course, this is not just about bricks and mortar, and that 25-year journey is about people in this community involved in cross-cultural, intercultural exchange and development who had this vision a long time ago. So there's been quite a few setbacks along the way. They can be dealt with elsewhere in history books, but this is fruition. And the kind of programmes that are going on in the temporary building, the kind of programmes to support refugees and other communities, emerging communities, mingling with older communities, and cross-cultural cultural events I've been to, food, music, experience of journey of refugees, it's just been extraordinary. So, yes, we're going to have an established building, and that's great. But really, it's the strength of these experiences and these shared experiences that happens in an intercultural space that is really the great value. But I commend all the officers who are bringing this to fruition.
Thank you, councillor Lawrence. Councillors, we've heard from councillor Greco as a mover. Councillor McCarthy's the second, and councillor Lawrence. Are there any further speakers? I'll put that item to the vote. All those in favour? Thank you, councillors. It's been carried unanimously. The next item we have to consider is item number 10, Notice of Motion, item number 10.1, Parking Restrictions. And I understand this was a submission from councillor Emily Dimitriatus. Just before I ask, I just want to confirm that if we could get councillor Dimitriatus's motion, notice of motion on the screen, can I confirm that that is your notice of motion first, councillor Dimitriatus? Thank you. So as a mover, councillor Dimitriatus, I'm looking for a second. Second by councillor Lawrence. Councillor Dimitriatus, would you like to speak to your notice of motion?
Yes, thank you, mayor. Recently, many community members contacted councillors to make us aware that council officers are undertaking reviews of large areas of the municipality, including Northgate, Preston and Thornbury, to potentially introduce two-hour restrictions in residential streets. So we were provided with maps of these areas as well. What concerns me about this review, or study as it was called, is that not only did the community rally against this now-withdrawn two-hour blanket restrictions that were proposed in 2019, but this process is occurring again without councillors being informed. Yet this time, council staff are taking it upon themselves to decide where the large areas of Darabin will have parking restrictions on.
Point of order. Can I, yeah, just one moment. Councillor Rennie, would you like to, you need to advise, what item?
It's offensive.
I actually asked that you watch your tone in terms of what, sorry, which particular?
It's the words as well as the tone that are offensive.
Which particular words?
The reference to council staff.
Yep. Can I ask you to retract that and perhaps utilise a different wording, please, councillor Dimitriatus?
I'm not sure which wording I should retract.
It implies, it implies.
And who actually is offended.
The CEO might be able to cast.
Yeah, just one moment.
Through you, mayor, to assist councillor Dimitriatus. I think the issue is the reference to council staff undertaking parking reviews, apparently or seemingly or implied not at the direction of council. There's an inference that council staff are out there just doing this, whereas council staff would be operating under either the policies of council. So I think just be, I think the advice is to be careful in terms of how you might imply why council staff are acting in a particular way, if that assists you.
Thank you for that. I understand that, but I believe there is no policy that dictates this particular process.
So perhaps you can utilise different words, perhaps when you are debating the item rather than?
So there's no policy directing officers to actually?
Perhaps we can watch our tone and what we actually say. Yes, sure.
If I may assist again, I think the, if you're concerned about the actions of council staff, then that should be raised with me. So if you think that not in public debate, so if you think that council staff are?
I don't have a particular issue with that.
Just one moment, can we please allow, councillor Dimitriatus, can we please allow the CEO to finish his statement before you continue?
I think the issue is that if you're concerned that council staff are acting against policy or outside policy and undertaking reviews into parking without clear guidance from council, then that's a matter that should be raised with me, probably not in debate in the chamber. I think you can prosecute your motion to ask for a review without commenting on the motives of council staff. And I think that's what the mayor's asking you to do.
Thank you.
Sure. I'll clarify that. So basically, this process that's occurring, there is no policy in place at the moment at Darabin that council has approved for it to occur. So currently, the process that is occurring is that one community member, whether a resident or a business owner, with the signature of a second person, can apply to council to have a street reviewed for parking restrictions. Then council or staff undertake a review of all residents living within that street to decide if parking restrictions should be installed in that street. And I'm told that this is done without property owners of investment properties being informed as well. That's what I've been told. So what this norm does is asks the question, what are the operating procedures and considerations that council or staff members or whoever it is use to decide that parking restrictions should be in place in a street? Currently, there is no policy in place for this to occur. And what we've heard in previous meetings by some of the Greens councillors, for instance?
Sorry, councillor, councillor, can we just talk about councillors? We're not labelling them. No, no, retract that comment, please, councillor.
I'm happy to retract it. What we're hearing from some councillors is that they want less cars, which is a quote in Darabin, which means residents have to walk, cycle or use public transport to get around. However, as I've said before, this is not practical for all members of our community.
Time, please, councillor Dimitriatus, thank you.
Such as the frail, some of families, they can't travel all together on public transport or on bikes to go to the doctors, people with a disability, and the list goes on. So Darab, I believe Darabin needs to change its stance. Cars are not the enemy, yet this council has made it so for so many years. We should not and cannot be trying to control the lives of our residents and how they should travel from one place to another. In many instances, cars are necessity for access to healthcare, food and shelter. And with the introduction of electric vehicles, cars are having less impact on emissions and therefore the environment. Therefore, I'm moving this notice of motion today to simply receive a report into how we can address this issue and ensure we deliver for the wider community, not just those who are constantly trying to impose their ideologies on residents.
Thank you, councillor Dimitriatus. As a second, would you like to speak to councillor Lawrence?
Yes, ma'am, I seen it. Thank you. The issue of the regulation of car spaces and time across the city, traditionally in the past, I'll just go on to it, was very much done by individual streets. And basically, as congestion and problems occurred, we would slowly review them. I suppose like Yarra did, you know, 40 years ago, right? So that has been slowly, the parking permits and the restrictions of time have been responding to congestion around train stations and those sorts of things. Our foray into being kind of future-oriented and doing blanket two-hour car parking obviously went ahead of the community previously. I think there needs to be a tempered debate about this, because even in some of the areas that are currently being surveyed, I know people on, you know, the busy roads there, they want restrictions, they want regulation. But the problem is when we're dealing with two bigger slabs, I think we apply some characterisations of two-hour limits into quiet areas, and that's what caused the backlash. And you can see that backlash was in reservoir parts of Preston and parts of Thornbury, parts of Fairfield. But in other parts of the city, where we've got our hospital overflowing into Mount Cooper, we've got a university flowing into Springthorpe, people want regulation of the time and the space and the permits they're even willing to look at because of the overuse. So without going into ideological debates about bikes versus cars versus electric cars, et cetera, et cetera, I think we will proceed, if we proceed more cautiously to concentrate on where actual gripes about congestions are, then we'll be able to proceed and regulate things.
Thank you, councillor Lawrence. Are there any councillors in opposition to this item? Notice of motion. Councillor Hanan?
Thank you, mayor. I, sorry to say I can't support this item. I don't accept the premise that there's been some kind of huge community outcry. I have seen some commentary on social media. But from what I have seen, there are, and this has actually come to a previous council meeting, a similar discussion, and we heard from staff at that time that there are a number of consultations currently underway. Some of them have been held up for some time. All of them were initiated by at least one community member who felt the need to have a review of the situation in their street. All of whom, all of these cases have been reviewed by specialist staff and follow a clear process that's been on our website for some time. You can go and check it out. There's no particular ideology behind this other than having fairness, balancing the competing needs of a limited resource. You've got people who want to be able to park out in front of their house. You've got others who want to use the area, particularly around activity centres. I know I've been contacted personally by members of the community saying, can we please look at the restrictions in my area? Because it's getting impossible. I would hate to have to go back to them to say, well, we're going to pause this while we run a report. It's worth adding that to do this work, which is unbudgeted, this would mean that we need to pause not only the consultations currently underway, which, you know, waiting on answers, but future work in the roads and traffic space, including a review of the parking permit policy, which is only just underway. We're just in people's feedback. And your, your street, you'll say, comprehensive approach to get comprehensive solutions for our community. I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Councillor Hanan, are there any further speakers? Councillor Williams?
Thank you. Parking is a very complex issue, and the agenda really impacts every resident. The community has expressed their concerns back in 2019 regarding the survey. And the question is, if it's not broken, then why are we trying to make changes to our whole city? Three years later, council is going out to the community to look at parking restrictions. I'm not surprised there has already been community uproar about this issue and concerns that council is making a profound decision and fears this will be a policy on the run without proper community engagement and consultation. For council to better understand the community, it needs to ensure the community are involved in every step and keep updates along the way, so that the community is not assumed that there will be a blanket approach across the whole city. If council is considering any new parking policy, the community must be engaged, because that is the key. Ensuring high community involvement, like 30 to 50% of every resident, and getting feedback, because every household, every worker, every street, every suburb will vary from what their needs are. From the number of people per households to the diversity, the disability and tradies or carers who are workers, or every business that will no doubtably will be impacted and need to have a say also. If council officers do not get the 50%, that is what residents need and want, and get that feedback in every street, sadly, it will be a policy that is just plain discriminatory. There will be a major backlash from the community.
Thank you, councillor Williams. Can I ask you perhaps to go, can we ask a question to the CEO in relation to the comment about not proper community consultation, please?
Through you, mayor. I think it was fine. Councillor Williams was just referring to an outcome from council officers' engagement, as far as I heard. I don't think there was a criticism of council officers. The comment was, if we don't get 50%, then we're not listening to the community. I think that's not a criticism of council officers, in my view.
My question was about community consultation, so perhaps we can ask that to be addressed through. Can I have that addressed through governance, please, in terms of the community consultation process? My understanding is that there is, yeah. No, didn't, no, that's okay.
Through you, ma'am, I seen her. In terms of the clarity you're looking for, what I can do is take this on notice. Whilst I have carriage of community engagement broadly at an organisational level in my portfolio, I'm not familiar in detail with the concerns or the clarification that's being sought on this particular piece of engagement. Miss Olivier may be able to assist with response?
Through you, mayor, I might just have a go. I think the question was, just to help Miss Olivier. I think the question, there was a comment made around the extent to which we need to engage to understand the needs, parking needs in each seat. I just heard that as debate. I'm not sure. Miss Olivier might be able to help in terms of the reach of the current have your say on our parking policy or the extent of consultation we do when we do these sorts of traffic surveys? That might help answer the mayor's question.
In relation to the parking permit policy, I heard there was no community consultation. That's what I heard.
Okay, thank you, mayor.
Thank you.
Sorry, mayor, can I clarify? Do you mean the parking permit policy? Are we talking parking restrictions?
Parking permit policy, I heard.
So we're currently in a consultation process for the parking permit policy? My understanding is that the matter currently being considered here is about local parking restrictions, which is separate. They also have a consultation process.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? Councillor McCarthy?
Mayor, I'm trying, I'm going to speak against the motion for three reasons. First is that I think, and I don't understand how officers can reasonably be expected to undertake a review by the next council meeting of the process as listed, unless they are simply going to do what I just did, which is circulate to all councillors a website which outlines, I think, the answers to, most of the questions are up on screen. Council has, according to council's own website, 65 requests currently underway, requests that have come from residents, to council residents and businesses. 65 requests underway at the moment, which council is either stage in, yet to commence or in step one, step two or step three, according to the list that I see here. And councillors can look at this for themselves. So what I'm not clear on, and that's why I can't support this, is what the impact of this motion would be if it was to be accepted. Whether it's asking our officers to go and undertake a review process or whether it's for officers to review what is currently on the website, which? the website, which outlines the process step by step, whether it would suggest or otherwise imply that the sixty-five requests that have come through from different parts of our community are needing to be put on hold. It's not really clear to me what the outcome is here. If a councillor needs information, that information can be sought from officers. If there is an effort here to actually review the parking process, parking restriction process, that's a separate thing. I actually don't think...
Item number, please, and...
Ten, sorry, I'd have to have a look at the, it's just not relevant. Basically, this is actually reviewing the park, ten point one, I'm not sure what the relevance clause is.
I actually think it is relevant, so continue.
Sorry, I haven't explained why. So basically, because the actual norm says that it's looking at the process that's being undertaken to have parking restrictions, so I don't know why councillor McCarthy is asking for that when it's actually in the norm.
Okay, thank you, please continue, councillor.
Thanks, Mayor, if I can just have ten, any other ten seconds?
Yep, you can, yes.
So, look, as far as I can see it, Mayor, the process that councillors, I understand it, uses is clear, transparent and on the website. It also gives the community clarity in terms of which streets are currently requesting reviews. And so what I'm concerned about is the implication that council would somehow review that whole process in a month's time. But also, there's also a case of councillors actually undertaking a consultation at the moment, at councillor Dimitriantis's request in relation to the parking policy.
Thank you.
And that's, I think, let's do one thing at a time.
Thank you, councillor McCarthy. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Greco.
Mayor Messina, I have an amendment that I'd like to propose. And I've circulated this earlier and hopefully it'll come up on the screen.
You circulated it earlier? Just one moment, let's give councillors the opportunity to read it. Thank you. Councillor Dimitriatus, as the mover, of your notice the motion, do you accept that amendment?
Yes.
Thank you. Councillor Greco, would you like to speak to it?
Thank you, sir, it's been accepted.
Second, sorry, that means that there's no right of reply, yep, continue.
Okay, so now am I speaking, I'm not speaking to my amendment anymore, I'm speaking to the substantive motion.
That's correct.
Yeah. All right, if I'm speaking to the substantive motion, then what I would like to say is that I commend councillor Dimitriatus for bringing this to the council.
Sorry, Mayor, the time, oh, yeah, it was one twenty.
Sorry?
I'm sorry, I have no idea, what do you mean? Okay, just one moment, let's stop the clock. Councillor Greco, would you like to speak to it now? Thank you.
I'll start again. Look, I'd like to congratulate councillor Dimitriatus for bringing this to the council. Why is it important that this comes to the council? It's important that it comes to the council because we don't have a policy in relation to how parking restrictions get placed in our city. We have a practice, yes, of course, we do have a practice, but a practice, what is a practice? A practice is then to the discretion of our officers. And that's fine, and we have lots of activities that are to the discretion of our officers, but we don't have a policy in relation to this. And I think, given the importance of such an issue, and I just have to remind councillors, 2019, this hall was full of people from the community crying out about what a future policy was going to look like. So it's important that the council, as a decision-making body, develops a policy. Like tonight, we had a policy on memorials. I must say, councillors, we've got policies on how long you can leave your bit out, we've got a policy about how many corfluts you could put on somebody's fence, that's how minute the policies get. And we don't have a policy about this when the community is talking a lot about these types of issues. We could try and sort of say that we're looking, you know, your street initiative that we have, and we have all these other initiatives, and we could try and sort of frame it within that, but as our officers said, this is distinct, this is a distinct thing. Now, what's up here is not saying that we put a halt to what's already in course, let that play out. What we're saying is let something come back to the council with all these, looking at a report with, has all those elements being there and much more, and look at the pros and cons, and then council can determine which is the best way forward in terms of adopting a policy from council.
Thank you, councillor Greco. What I didn't allow, generally speaking, when there is a big amendment, to ask officers any questions, and I didn't allow it at that particular time, so I'm just wondering if there are any questions to the officers. Councillor McCarthy.
Mayor, I don't think I can speak again, can I? Because...
No, no, I'm asking if you've got questions.
Okay, so I'm going to ask a question. There are additional items here, three items as I can see. I'm wanting to understand whether council officers are in a position to provide a report in response to all of the items as listed here, or what would be an appropriate, and secondly, if not, what would be an appropriate timeline for such a report to be received by council?
Thank you, because you asked the question that I wanted to ask and I didn't, so can I direct that to the officers? Hence why I stopped the debate, because it was extra three lines.
So councillors, the extra points don't substantially change the level of work. The level of work in writing a report of this nature is not insubstantial though, and the teams that would need to do it are currently running a consultation and so don't have time and space. If the current consultation proceeds, this team couldn't deliver that by November, they could deliver it by February, but that in itself would also put some, put some current year work at risk, so it wouldn't be without sort of risk to the work programme. But February would essentially be achievable without having to stop sort of current public work.
Thank you. Do you have a supplementary question? Because I do.
I've got an amendment, Mayor, when we come to that, no more questions.
Sure. He has an amendment, but I do have a question, but so...
Ask your question, Mayor.
My question is, if there was somebody that was waiting for a disability parking spot in front of their home, would this delay them receiving one? Because I had one recently.
So, no, we would not interpret this as putting a pause on any current practices or procedures. What it would impact is actually the other transport projects that are underway, including the parking permit policy consultation. So that's the main thing that would be impacted. Some of, certainly we think there are obligations under the, under our accessibility legislation, that means we would always continue providing accessible parking spots where they're needed.
Thank you. Councillor McCarthy.
I do have another question, if I can. Could councillors receive advice in relation to, we've heard about the timeframe that's involved, but is the nature of the questions that are being put here work that can be undertaken internally within the organisation, or does it require any external expense that council needs to be aware of in order to get the advice back of an independent nature?
So we haven't, we would turn our minds to that. If we were doing it on a really short timeframe, we probably wouldn't have the lead time in order to consider an external consultant. With a little bit more time, that becomes possible and it can help us manage delay impacts as well. In terms of the sort of advice being sought, it's within the technical skill set of council officers.
So the answer to you previously was the date, just one moment, yeah, just one moment, the date was the issue, councillor, sorry, Miss Olivier.
So the work itself, it takes time or money or both, usually both. It's not insubstantial, it's been, so before the amendments, it was estimated at about twenty working days. And so the consequence of trying to do that in November is we'd have to stop something else.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Just one moment, I want to go back to councillor McCarthy, yeah, okay. Councillor Greco, I'm going to allow this only because this was actually circulated very late and it didn't give the opportunity to councillors to ask questions, so I'm going to go over to councillor Greco. Do you have a question? Normally we don't enter into questions once the debate has entered, but this is significant and it was circulated very late in the afternoon, so I'm going to allow it on this case because this is a really important issue and I want to address it. So councillor Greco, your question.
Look, just, my point is just the appropriateness of the question that was asked. It's a question that goes to officer discretion in relation whether a consultant is engaged or not engaged, and I don't think it's appropriate that here at the council level that any...
I disagree, continue, sorry, I disagree.
That any indication is given to officers about whether a consultant needs to be engaged or...
Are you asking a question or you're debating? Are you raising a point of order or asking a question?
Well, the question is the appropriateness of the question that was asked.
What item number, councillor?
And I asked that the question be withdrawn because it's putting officers in a difficult situation of them exercising their discretion in relation to how they deal with this matter.
Yep. I think it was a relevant question to ask. Councillor, I'm going to allow that question over to you, councillor Lawrence, you were going to ask a question.
Yes, ma'am, Sena. My question is to the officers, and obviously it's going to be thumbnail response, but we've sort of spoken about resources for extra for asking people what might happen in their street down to that finer detail, which we used to do. If in some of these maps I've seen, I suspect two-thirds want restrictions and one-third don't, if I was going to assume...
Okay, just one moment.
If I was going to assume...
Just one moment, stop, councillor Lawrence. Councillor Lawrence, councillor Lawrence, sorry, councillor Rennie has a point of order.
Point of order fifty-three, one, point B, it's irrelevant to the matter under consideration in that the matter under consideration of questions here is solely the amendment put by councillor Greco, not the motion in its entirety. And any question that isn't specific to the amendment and nothing else is out of order.
Thank you, councillor, yeah, it's, yeah, a question.
So can I point out some clarity of thinking? I'm asking the capital works cost, if we allow people to have their say and we reduce the amount of signs...
Do you have a question?
That's my question.
Yep.
If people are allowed to have a say and it ends up with a thirty per cent less signage, what is the capital cost or savings that's going to come from this?
So my reading of this amendment is about what to include in a report and the report itself would outline any cost implications.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Are there any further speakers? To the part of D, E and F? Yep, I just wanted to clarify because I don't want it to be used as a point where councillors use this. If you've got a question, that'd be, that's great. Thank you, councillor Dimitriatus.
I note that you mentioned twenty days was the, could be the turnaround for the report for A to C. Could the report be turned around, including D, E and F by December, the December meeting? Or January? Why is it February? Why does three extra points mean February?
So the estimate of twenty working days is the total labour involved rather than the start to finish, so it's about making sure we've got people available for that many hours and all of our people are currently doing other things. So there wouldn't be a single officer available to come offline unless we stop something else. In terms of whether you could do it by December, my best advice at this moment is you would have to stop something else substantial. I'd have to go and look at what that is. Certainly trying to proceed in November would have an impact on the current parking permit consultation. I haven't looked specifically at November. What the team have advised is that February would give us the time to do the current work and then get to this piece.
Are there any further questions? Councillor Rennie.
I note that we've received some advice in relation to the potential need to defer your street, your say, area B. What are the implications for that piece of work, which is the next significant piece of work in the team?
So those are the, those are the two pieces. So the one I've mentioned this evening is the parking permit consultation. The other big piece of work this team looks at is the annual review of the forward planning and consultation for road safety improvements in a third of the city. They're about to start the consultation of that.
There's no point of order, there's...
That was read from a confidential report. The, as in, what the question came from.
Just one moment, councillors, actually councillor, this is really messy, we're going to take a ten-minute break. I'm really disappointed that there's amendments that have been circulated, there's all these questions, I allowed those questions because it was, it's a really important issue to discuss, but we've had plenty of time to ask those questions prior to this council meeting, so I'm going to adjourn the meeting for another ten minutes, so we go to eight thirty-five, please, councillors, can we please stop the live streaming?
Will confuse the community and I think will anger quite a few who are saying, are you sure in this review of parking permits that you're only interested in parking permits? Are you sure you're not trying to talk about something else? If we go into talking about parking restrictions, when we've gone to the community and said the current review is only about parking policy, parking permit policy, I think we're going to not only create confusion, but result in a lot of anger. In addition, the other major piece of work that team is working on is the Your Street Your Say programme for Area B. This is the area of East Northgate, East Thornby, Fairfield, Alfington, MacLeod, Bandura. That work will be the biggest casualty. And we know from Area A with the fabulous Your Street Your Say proposals.
Thank you, councillor Rennie.
We know how important this is.
Councillor Rennie, please take a seat.
I don't want to see Your Street Your Say Area B deferred. It's really important.
Please close the microphone. Thank you. Please stick to your time limits. I've allowed a few councillors to go over. Please stick to your time limits. Thank you. Before I put this item to the vote, I'd like to say something. You can't actually, councillor Greco.
I've got one amendment. I've got an opportunity.
No, just one moment. I've sought governance advice. Okay. I just would like to read this item number four point eight, item five. Anyone councillor cannot without the leave of the chairperson move more than two amendments in succession. So I can't accept it. Councillor. Can't move another. Can't move another amendment. So I'd just like to say something, please. This will be the second, so you can't.
Just a point of clarification.
Just, yeah, just one moment. I'm going to go over to governance, please. As the governance rules state, which you just read out, so any one councillor cannot, without the leave of the chairperson, move more than two amendments in succession. It's clear.
Member Sena, if I may make just a point.
Just one moment.
Okay.
One moment. Yes, wrong item. We can vote on it and then move a different amendment. Okay.
Do you want to read four point eight, please?
Can we please stop the streaming? This is really sloppy. Stop the streaming, please. Thank you. Councillor Greco.
Member Sena, I would like to move a second amendment in relation to this substantive motion.
Thank you.
And the second amendment that I'd like to move is in relation to the date of when this report is to come back to us and to accommodate the officers' requirements and that the report comes back to us at the first meeting in February twenty twenty three.
Do we need a date? No? Yep, okay. Is that acceptable to the mover and the seconder?
Yes.
Yes, certainly.
Thank you. Councillor Greco, would you like to speak to it?
Mayor, there is no speaking to it.
Okay. Okay, that's it. But, okay, so we put this item all to the vote. All those in favour? That's correct. On the whole thing, yes. I'll put that. Yes, that's correct.
Sorry, mayor, was it February or the first meeting?
First meeting of February, which is, well, it is. First meeting is actually in February. We don't have a January meeting. So it's first meeting in twenty twenty three, which is in February.
I just wanted to just give the difference between what councillor Greco said and what's on screen. So I don't want us to be voting until we're clear on what we're voting on.
Okay, councillors. Thank you. Councillor Greco, can I just confirm? In the first, your insertion was in the first meeting in February twenty twenty three. Is that correct?
Member Sena, correct.
Thank you. Councillors, we're going to put this item to the vote. All those in favour? That's councillor Williams, councillor Dimitriatus, councillor Messina, councillor Lawrence, councillor Greco. All those against? That's councillor Hannan, councillor McCarthy, councillor Rennie. That item's been carried. Thank you. The next item we have on the agenda is item number ten point two, towards zero rough sleepers in Darabhan. Councillor Lawrence, this is your motion. Would you like to speak?
Yeah, just, Mayor Messina, just briefly just asked from the officers. We did update the motion to say functional, what is the wording, the phrase around zero? So I was just.
Functional zero.
Functional zero. So I'm just not sure whether the name of the motion, the title, got updated in that regard.
So I'm assuming councillor Lawrence, what you'd like to do is change the title of your motion?
Just to include that functional zero terminology, which is specific to this policy area.
Thank you. Just one moment, councillor. We'll just do one thing at a time, please. Thank you. Is that correct, councillor?
Yep.
Is this your motion now, councillor?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Messina. I'll just be brief.
No, no, you're not. I haven't got a seconder yet. I just want to confirm, is this your motion, councillor?
Yes.
Do I have a seconder? Councillors? A second by councillor Dimitriatus. Now you can speak to it, councillor Lawrence.
Okay, just briefly, just recapping. I have brought this issue to council previously based on UK experience of certain city in the UK a few years ago. At that time, there wasn't live examples in Australia. Obviously, there was examples over in America with slightly different focus as well, certain cities. In terms of getting outreach and dealing with people who were sleeping in the streets, they sexually sleep in front of our building here, in front of our building down here, as we know, and also behind the building here. Now, these type of programmes require effort and focus. And when we saw during Covid, we actually saw homelessness addressed in a massive way with the state government, with the provision of hotels and temporary. So there's really movement. Now, in Port Phillip, they've introduced a pilot around this very specific thing, targeting five percent of the homelessness problem, but the most acute one and one that is repeated year after year after year for some people who fall into this category. So it's an acute and chronic form of homelessness. And obviously, this project in Port Phillip has demonstrated thirty percent decrease in this type of rough sleeping. So I'm long been an admirer of Port Phillip on their housing trust in terms of the community, as people know. And in fact, my great grandmother's property is now part of that community housing trust, which was traditional rooming house for the poor near Gray Street and Barclay Street. So this is where they're leading the way. I think council has been moving. And as we heard from our officer, Shadi, with communication today, we've done a lot of outreach in terms of providing access to showers and other comforts and other necessities to homeless on the street in the last two years. So we're beginning to build the infrastructure and the contacts to do this type of work, which succeeds only when councils work with the relevant homelessness associations to create the linkages and the support and the trust for people to make the next step in terms of housing. Now, so I have put in, I know there's been a bit of questions about point three. I'm really just suggesting that I understand that there may be new partners and new staff or new things that maybe need to be put in place before this can be actually rolled out in the next budget. I don't know what that quantum is the staff would know, but I'm not asking for people to shift massive hundreds of thousands of dollars of capital works. But I've just been respectful for the organisation that we might get officers to consider what pre-planning resources, which is really our people's target, is also factored in.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Dimitriatus, as a seconder, would you like to speak to?
Reserve my right, thanks.
Are there any further speakers? Councillor Hannan.
I'd like to move an amendment, mayor.
Yep, and the amendment is?
I've circulated it to councillors as well as to governance, council business. There's a number of small changes. Yeah, that's it. It's on screen.
Is that acceptable to the mover and the seconder? I think we need to have them side by side. I'm not too sure. Councillor Lawrence, do you know what the amendment was from councillor Hannan?
Yeah, I'm looking at the amendment there. Obviously, the two amendments are, one is just a word change in number two. Number one is whether or not we're willing to make a commitment here and now. So I think that's a subjective judgement, which I am willing to make a commitment here and now. And as for dropping point three, that doesn't allow staff the capacity to say, well, we actually might need, you know, twenty thousand dollars for a consultant or twenty thousand dollars of staff time to, you know, get this thing ready.
So it's not acceptable. That's what I'm asking. It's not acceptable. Okay, it's not acceptable. Councillor Hannan.
Thank you, mayor. And look, thank you to councillor Lawrence for raising this important issue. I'm very supportive in principle, of course, about eliminating rough sleeping in Darabhan as much as we can and more broadly. However, this is a complex issue and requires careful consideration. As we know, sleeping rough is the end product of a wide range of factors, including poverty, family violence, mental health, drug and alcohol use, et cetera. It's also the most extreme end of the homelessness spectrum, with far greater number of people living in vulnerable conditions of homelessness or couch surfing. While I do support the principal intent behind this, we're not in a position to make this commitment here and now on this policy or any policy without knowing what it means in practice and what the resourcing implications will be. That's the first point. The change to number two there is just to say that it's a very specific subset of information that reports are asking for, and we should be looking to take into account a range of evidence from a number of sources. The third point there is if we accept that we can know, it's just not possible to get this kind of report before February twenty twenty three based on staff advice. It's not appropriate to then commit to start doing some of the work before then. So really, we need to get the report, then make an assessment, and then start doing the work. Thank you.
Thank you. I noticed that I didn't ask for a seconder. Councillor. Councillor McCarthy, would you like to speak to the amendment?
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, mayor. And I'm happy to second councillor Hannan's amendment. I do so because I actually thank councillor Lawrence for bringing this. And as councillors would know, we do have obviously a housing crisis. And it's one that we need to take seriously. And I think we need to be really clear about how homelessness and rough sleeping are not exactly the same thing. Rough sleeping is a behaviour, is an action that has multiple causes, as councillor Hannan has mentioned. I think it's really important that every single councillor in this room can actually unpack and explain what functional zero means in relation to rough sleeping. Because, to be really frank, it's a term that I only heard for the first time today. So I'm not actually comfortable with us making a policy commitment to something which actually we have not even been briefed on yet. But I am absolutely enthusiastic about us getting that information and us understanding it. The challenge that we have as a council in our desire to do the best thing and the right thing is actually also understanding what it takes. And I don't think that a single councillor in this room could tell me how much it would cost for us to deliver on a commitment of functional zero rough sleeping in this city tonight. I don't think a single councillor could do it. Because if they did, they would be making up a number based on what? We haven't had that information. So we can't make a commitment to something unless we know what it will cost. And whether it's us or other agencies, we actually need that information. So I think councillor Hannan has put forward a really useful set of amendments here to actually keep this moving forward. So we can consider this. I hope that we not only consider it, but I hope we all enthusiastically support it. But we actually need to know what the cost of delivering this is and what functional rough sleeping actually is or functional zero targets actually are.
Thank you. Councillors, before, can I have a procedural motion?
A move half an hour extended.
Thank you. Move by councillor Rennie, all those, second by councillor Greco, all those in favour? That's been carried before. We've heard from councillor McCarthy and councillor Hannan. I just want to go to the title because it doesn't, because it talks about functional zero and the title says towards zero. Did you want, I'm just preempting just to get the. No, okay, all right. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Dimitriatus.
Yes, just quickly, I wanted to speak about this amendment. Basically, I don't understand where councillor McCarthy was saying that we can't come up with a, we can't come up with a figure tonight about this particular, about the budget implications, when this particular amendment is asking for a report in November about the budget implications. So I don't quite understand.
That's a debate, please.
How we're supposed to be, where the issue, which has currently been excluded according to this amendment. So we're not even going to get a budget report of how much it will cost because it's been excluded in this amendment. So it's a little bit, I'm finding that particular item a little bit, that particular issue a bit confusing. The other thing about this amendment is that it considers, now this council has been considering a lot of things for a long period of time. We don't commit to things and stick it out and make changes to. So I understand that in words, in having the word consider, I think it doesn't take the issue seriously. So that's another issue with this amendment that I personally have. And I don't think, but in particular the report, if we want to know how much it's going to cost council, we need a report that's according to the previous norm, it said in November. So this particular amendment removes that, which I don't understand why.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Greco.
Yeah, look, I'm specifically going to refuse this amendment. And I think it actually just waters down what the intent is. Look, councillors, I don't think we can be overly bureaucratic when we deal with issues of such social significance and importance. You ask a homeless guy about the wording about this sort of stuff, or ask anyone, ask a punter out there, you know, that motion or that motion, come on, guys. Let's not try to water down something with bureaucratic speak that then does not lead us to it. As councillor Dimitriatus, words like consider and things like that. In terms of whether we're committing to a, we've already committed, we've already committed to addressing and having policies on homelessness. This fits within that. And this particular point that was raised by councillor Lawrence in his original rate falls within that ambit. And I just don't understand the hesitancy, particularly of a council. Then we work out the detail later on, council. And that's what our officers are there for and things like that. But if we're going to approach an amendment of this nature that has such bureaucratic connotations to it, I think we're just missing the point about what we're trying to achieve. And the other point that I made, I understand that it's a complex issue, undoubtedly. Of course, I understand that. I understand that it's a very concerning issue, but it's not a new issue. There are examples out there of how to address this issue, and there's lots of information about it. We have a CEO that comes from a council that is addressing this issue. So let's move from, away from zero base and let's really move ahead on this sort of stuff rather than getting caught in words and bureaucratic speak. And let's get some action in relation to something like this.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers?
Just a question, can I speak to the amendment or not?
Yes.
Okay, can I speak against the amendment?
Yes, you can.
Yeah, look. You know, I think people really need to reflect on what happened here in this room in a budget recently. It was very distressing when a homeless woman came into our budget and made an incredible protest who had been living behind here. I don't know at what point the game playing and the petulance is going to stop on this homelessness issue here. We've had a debate several years ago, two, three years ago, about these UK programmes themselves, whether you call them. We actually had.
Yes, speak to the amendment, councillor, you're speaking to the.
I am saying.
Councillor Lawrence, if I'm correct in.
Item number, please.
Referred to petulance and game playing.
Yeah, can you please perhaps retract that?
I would like that to stop, yes.
Could you please perhaps choose different words, please, councillor Lawrence? Can be respectful, withdraw those words and use different words.
Mature and overly tactical actions might be parliamentary. But what I'm saying is, we have debated, and I've put forward to you these programmes running in the US and the UK for several years. It is, it is not responsible.
Speak to the amendment, please, councillor Lawrence, not to.
Now, I'll go through the intent of the motion, which this series of amendments seeks to derail. We commit to zero kill, we commit to zero emissions, we commit to goals. I've explained to you how Port Phillip have made it thirty percent of the way in terms of reducing the actual people rough sleeping. The functional zero programme is no different to any other programme where you're going for an aim. I've broken the motion down because we're going to get the information in February to structure the programme in the next budget.
Thank you, councillor.
Point three is simply to make sure that we have the staff resources in place.
Thank you, councillor. Are there any further speakers? When I put this item to the vote, all those in favour? Yes, yeah, it's councillor Hannan, councillor McCarthy, councillor Messina, councillor Rennie. All those against? That's councillor Williams, councillor Dimitriatus, councillor Greco, and you're abstaining?
What are we voting on?
We're voting on this, this, this being accepted, yes.
Voting against the amendment or for the amendment?
I've already gone through for the amendment and I went against the amendment.
Against the amendment, yes.
Okay, that it's been, it's been carried. Thank you. Oh, yes, it is, it's been carried. Thank you. Now we move over to item number, that we're going to debate this. So we heard from councillor.
Can I have some clarity on what the votes were?
Yes. Can we, all those in favour of this, please raise your hands and I'll read out the names. Councillor Hannan, councillor McCarthy, councillor Messina, councillor Rennie. All those against? Okay. Councillor Williams, councillor Dimitriatus, councillor Greco, councillor Lawrence. I have the casting vote, so that I vote for it, it's been carried. This has now been carried. So we're now, we've heard from councillor Dimitriatus, councillor Hannan, councillor McCarthy, councillor Dimitriatus, councillor Greco. And this becomes this particular one. Does there anybody that wants to speak to this particular item? Okay. Okay. Okay, okay. Any further speakers? For this particular item?
I believe I have a reply.
No, it's been amended. You don't have a writer reply. Yes, councillor Greco?
Yeah, um, I, I'll speak to this, um, um, to this now substantive motion, even though it's a, you know, watered down motion from what we previously had. But still, I think it still takes us in the course of, um, um, uh, looking at homelessness, um, with, um, uh, a, a new lens, if you like, and, um, and also with, um, extra vigour, um, in, in, into the future. Uh, it's unfortunate that, um, that the, that we could not express here at least a commit, a commitment, and, um, a, as we did in the, in the previous motion, uh, uh, to commit to a target of zero, uh, rough, um, um, sleepers. And I just point out, because we received a, an email earlier this afternoon about what that means, because, um, many people perhaps didn't know what that meant. And when you read the, the four dot points about, you know, what the, um, uh, what that means, is that it's a lot of the things that we are currently doing with our existing policy. Maybe we haven't, uh, framed it in that way. But in, in terms of the, the housing homelessness work that we do, many of those dot points are covered. So I just don't understand why, uh, we could not commit to it tonight. And we have to go about it in this long, convoluted bureaucratic manner on, on such an important, um, on an important issue. We come to this chamber where we have notices of motion, where we commit to all sorts of things, um, you know, in faraway places, right? And we can't commit to something that's literally sometimes on our doorsteps. I, I, I just find that incredible councillors.
Ten seconds.
But notwithstanding that, what, seven seconds, I will be supporting this. And I'll be looking forward to the report that comes back and hopefully not getting the same bureaucratic obstacles that we're currently getting.
Thank you councillor Greco. Uh, councillor Hannan, councillor McCarthy, councillor Dimitriatus, uh, councillor Greco, councillor Lawrence. Councillor Dimitriatus has reserved her right. Are there any further speakers? It was yours, so you did, yes, you did.
Councillor Hannan spoke to the amendment, not to the motion?
Oh, yes, sorry.
Could I speak to this?
I thought you did, okay.
Oh, thank you. Look, I, I won't speak for long. I previously spoke to, um, proposed the amendment. Um, I'd like to say, um, that, um, I, again, um, commend all councillors for, for accepting this as, and for firstly, bringing this, um, to the agenda and now having it as the substantive motion. I think this is something we can really get behind. I think there is great potential to do something really important here. Um, I don't agree with the criticisms that have been levelled about watering down or bureaucratic. We've, this council is a leader in, in this space, um, uh, and in many other spaces. We make, we make bold commitments and we do stick to them. We didn't in a single meeting at a whim decide to take a strong position on, uh, any, any issue you named, um, gambling, First Nations justice, um, parking issues, uh, uh, climate emergency. We, we make our decisions based on evidence and we stick to the strong position.
Demanding.
I didn't hear anything demeaning from that. Continue, councillor?
Demanding, he said it's a whim that we consider the policy of functional zero.
I, I didn't, yeah, continue, continue councillor, continue councillor Hannan?
I'd also like to take this opportunity to commend, um, as councillor Greco mentioned, some of the excellent work that council does in this area. Just to note that since January 2020, a partnership with Mary Outreach Support Services, council's delivered, um, the Assertive Community Outreach Programme. Um, as part of our council action plan, we engage proactively with rough sleepers, we, uh, and people experiencing homelessness. Council, uh, links, um, people experiencing homelessness to services and accommodation.
Ten seconds.
And we've actually only in the last year, uh, in May 2022, expanded the programme to actually provide bridging funds to make sure that people can stay in housing.
That's time.
We have a lot to be proud of in this area and I look forward to taking it even further. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hannan. Are there any further speakers? Councillor McCarthy?
Um, thanks, mayor. I want to, um, I suppose, follow on from where councillor Hannan, um, started, which was actually to recognise, uh, the significant piece of work that obviously will get back to, to us as councillors in relation to how we move forward here, but also the significant work that's actually been happening in the sector in this space. Um, as councillors would know, um, the city Port Phillip, um, we, we of course, um, are very, very lucky to have, um, their former CEO now, our CEO, um, was, I believe, the first, um, such city to pursue the zero target. But this is a, an approach that's being approached around the world. What is important is actually, um, that homelessness and rough sleeping as an issue has moved from something which I think government and policymakers could talk about occasionally, but effectively try to avoid. We actually solved homelessness, um, as a, as a thing, very briefly, this is the, what policymakers will tell you, during COVID, because we literally gave people places to, to sleep and to live. And that was part of the COVID response. Now, we do know that there were still some people rough sleeping, there were still some people that didn't want to take up those opportunities. So this is multi-dimensional, it's multifaceted. But what is really critical is that we start somewhere. Um, so mayor, what I'm really excited about here is the fact that at the same time that we are embarking on this journey, we are going to do the serious work. Um, we are also hearing significant work happening, uh, from key agencies. The council of homeless, homeless people just recently launched its own campaign. It's asking organisations to consider coming on board with that, um, particularly around vulnerable young people. We are at a convergence here, where the, the local actors, being councils, being community agencies, are actually saying we need to get serious about this. And that's exactly where we are right now.
Ten seconds.
So mayor, I'm really excited about where we are. I think this is the right time for us to be talking about this. And I look forward to the report coming back to us.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers?
Thank you, mayor. Just quickly, I wanted to say I will be supporting this, um, substantive motion. I think, uh, we should have committed to, um, ensuring that homelessness, um, can be addressed, um, more seriously. But I think it's still going on the right track. And I hope that, um, the new report that will, the report that will come in, uh, will be able to deliver this. I'm disappointed, though, that we won't be able to get a budget review in November, um, according to this, uh, to see how much it would cost, uh, ratepayers for this particular work. But, um, I guess, uh, that would be down the track, I guess. Thanks.
Thank you. I'll put this item to the vote. All those in favour? Thank you. That's been carried unanimously. Item number 11, urgent business. There's no item urgent business to consider this evening. We will now move into the next item. Item number 12, items to be tabled in accordance with section 147.4 of the Local Government Act 2020, the arbiter's decision and statement of reasons on the matter of an application by councillor Tim Lawrence concerning councillor Suzanne Newton below is tabled and to be recorded in the minutes of the meeting. This item's been, is for tabling to council only and no comment or debate is required. Item number 13, consideration of reports considered confidential. Councillors, there's no confidential reports to be considered this evening, this evening. Um, item 14, close of meeting. Um, before I declare that, um, I saw a lot of texting going on tonight, hands, um, that were not raised when I asked for and against. So I'm really terribly disappointed. Um, uh, I will now declare the meeting closed at nine eighteen PM. Thank you.